Good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock. And welcome to another Redwood City School District Board meeting. Roll call, please, Evelyn.
Trustee Weekly absent, trustee McAvoy.
Present.
Trustee Wells.
Here.
Vice President Lawson.
Here.
President Marquez.
Here, thank you. Item four point two, reported on closed session from October eleventh, twenty twenty-three. And there is no report out. We took no action. And again, welcome everyone to another Redwood City School District Board meeting. Just as a reminder, we do have translation. If you're Spanish speaking, si requiere interpretación al español, por favor llame al nueve siete ocho nueve nueve cero cinco uno tres siete y presione el ocho tres siete siete cero cuatro uno y el número de el símbolo de número para la contraseña. The public isn't encouraged to speak to the board on issues concerns whether or not the issues are on the agenda. To address the board, please complete a speaker's card. If you are in person and if you are online, please submit a Google Doc. If you wish to speak to the board on subjects listed on the agenda, you will be called to the podium at the time the item is being considered by the board. If the item is not on the agenda, you will be called to the podium during oral communication. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person per topic unless otherwise noted. Are there any changes to the agenda? Okay, thank you. And with that, can I get a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
A second.
All those in favor?
I.
Thank you. And do we have any oral communication?
No oral communication.
Thank you. So moving on to item nine, bond program consent items. If there are no questions, can I please get a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
Hi, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to item eleven, school community reports. Eleven point one is a Redwood City Together board presentation.
Yes, good evening, and we have our executive director for Redwood City Together, Rafael Avendaño. So Rafael, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Push the button on the right. There you go.
Okay, thank you so much. Good evening, members of the board. Superintendent and administrative team and community, it's great to be here. My name is Rafael Avendaño. I'm the executive director of Redwood City Together. Going into my fourth year. Yeah, it's exciting. Prior to that, I was in the community of Redwood City in North Fair Oaks, running the CNAU Center. So I know many of you. Whether you're on Zoom or you're here in person. It's really great to leave our lead our collective impact organization called Redwood City Together. We're going into our thirty-eighth year, very exciting because you were one of the founding members. That's right. You and the city of Redwood City. Thought futuristically of how can we get a bunch of people together to improve our education wellness? And overall equity based programs in our community. And we are doing that. And today I'm going to share about how we're doing it. So I believe my clicker is here. Our mission is to advance the success of youth and families in Redwood City and North Fair Oaks through community collaboration. This is a picture of actually some of our partners in the community distributing food. But some of these people are also some of our funders. They come and volunteer with us and do life with us, which is really exciting. In addition to that, here's some of our goals. We really aspire to improve wellness, education and equity in the community. Really to improve the benchmarks of cradle to career. All of you know that you're you're in the world of that. We really want to advance economic mobility in the community, improve what it is health. Go after health deteriorators as well. And really advance our families with these areas. So one of the presentations that's going to happen later today is how do we improve mental health, right? That's one of the things we really try to do in the community is we try to cross collaborate with community based partners. To really see how they could work together so that they're not duplicating their efforts. That's that's our motto, right? It's how can we do our best to learn from them, but also coach them with methods that we have that are happening on a national spectrum. We're coached by Strive Together, which is a national collective impact organization that works with over four hundred partners nationwide. And they really help us really understand deeper what is the cradle to career method a little bit stronger. You know about us, a little bit more in detail. Our leadership, we have the trustees. Our chair is Alisa McAvoy has been sharing now for almost a year and a half. Thank you so much. And Cecilia has respectively been serving as well on our team. Janet also served for many years. And it's really great to just move the the needle of goodness, we like to say in our community alongside of you. I will open this up for Q and A and also some some words from them because without our team here, Amy Gerstein, I hear is on the line too. She's one of our core members. It's good to see you, Amy. Let me see your team here. We also have all of these folks that are either elected officials or department heads of some really core, big core agencies in our county. Like I said, though, you were one of the first. You helped us found this organization. This is our team. Have a wonderful team, some actually who have transitioned to not working for you, which is really fun. But their local talent, local talent is working for us. That's the very exciting part. We're thinking about economic mobility. It's happening within the wheelhouse of Redwood City Together where staff members are starting with us and going to our core agencies, which is exactly what we want. And I think that's that's already happening, which is really, really exciting. How we operate, we have ten core partners. We're fiscally sponsored by the city of Redwood City and you all provide in-kind services for us when it comes to our office locations. So thank you so much for that. In addition to that, there's a membership that each core agency puts into this core movement. Sequoia Healthcare Districts on that Kaiser, Stanford's Gardner Center, Kenyatta College, Sequoia Union. We also have Upward Scholars, a community based organization that sits on our seat and the county health system as well as Human Services Agency. And these ten core groups meet together to really leverage and fund programs on gaps that exist in our community. We do a lot of research and evaluation, so we try our best to use the most current data. That's why I'm excited to stay for the next presentation. Because what we learn, we share, right? So we work more, how can I say it, smarter and not that harder because sometimes working hard doesn't mean you're working what smarter, right? And so we really try to be precise, right? Precise with what it is our effort. And so some of the things we've incubated are Sequoia Teen Resource Center. The Safe Routes to School Program. Those are things that we've incubated as part of Redwood City Together. In addition to that, you'll hear more about the PACE program, the Purposeful Action Creation Engagement Plan to support our youth that are coming from vulnerable populations that typically sometimes feel stigmatized, criminalized and not heard. So we really try our best to to use these methods to advance our community. And we have over fifty-three partners that's consisting of community based organizations. We call our funders our partners because they support us with moving the work. And also some of our corporate sponsors as well. We have a gift giving policy now. So if you know of a corporate sponsor out there, people online, people here. Let them know that we're excited to talk to them and see how we could support some of your elements as well from the school district. Some of our working groups. We have a welcoming Redwood City Working Group, which really focuses on if you've seen Welcoming Week all around Redwood City or United Against Hate Week, the Oya Conference, World Cafe and the Books and Bikes Event. We have a whole working group dedicated to throwing these events every year. How can you be involved? Just send us a note. We will get you on the team. And it's really, really fun. These are really fun events all around shedding the light of how can we be a more inclusive and loving community? This is this is literally practicing some of the work that you all do around your equity work. So this is a fun group to be a part of. In addition to that, we have an early childhood working group that really goes after that fifty-year problem of child, early childhood gaps in our community. We are really trying to expand the workforce, make pay a little bit better in this in this arena. I know you are all dealing with the TK thing as well. So how can we advance the poll? Whether it's with higher with conversations with Kenyatta College, how can we start that a little bit earlier? How can we improve the pay? How can we really tell youth about these opportunities earlier as opposed to later? So this is all the stuff that we're really working on in this working group. And it's it's moving slowly but surely. We have a data council that actually Dr. Baker chairs with Dr. Gerstein that helps us really analyze our local data. And this was the group that helped us really develop our COVID nineteen needs assessment during the pandemic that stressed our three main needs and has really propelled our work to where it's at now. The three needs were how medical insecurity was real. Food insecurity and housing insecurity. So we deployed a whole promotoras team that canvassed the full community during COVID and it's still currently happening. But now instead of working with adults, we've primarily made our promotoras team youth led. So we have twelve youth champions that get paid twenty dollars an hour to canvas the community around those needs. And we're providing jobs for young people, but also again, advancing the work workforce, right? For social service. And some of the needs that we've seen are here, as you see. These are numbers that you're you're very aware of. We're really trying to work smart. When I say smart, we've also added IE, inclusive and equitable to our approach. Everything that we do has a baseline and hopefully an outcome that we hope to achieve every year. We do high level calibration reports that tells you how we're moving that work. And we own it. If we're not really moving the needle, it has a yellow. If it's really not moving, it has a red. And we're trying our best to be accountable to our community to do the right thing. And then our fundraising team. Not only does it help us like continue to keep the wheels moving. It also helps us fundraise so that we can support our community based organization partners and also our core agencies when a project comes up around a gap. Some of the gaps that we've seen in the past are data. When COVID hit, we needed to act fast. And we partnered with one of our core agencies, Stanford's Gardner Center for Youth and Their Families, the school district. And we were able to do that sample for the community. And it was actually really great because it then led to a countywide movement of them doing it on a grander scheme. So very exciting to jump in when needed. And we have a great team that kind of assesses and does that really well. This is a really fun working group as well. The CCCS Neighborhood Action Team, it's a children's collaborative for community success. It's a group of about eight core core group members that have signed up to be a California Accountable Community Health Initiative. Long, long word there, yeah. But it's state funded. For the next two and a half years, we're going to be working closely with the state and with thirty-six other ACHs to work on the gaps around the youth workforce. Economic mobility is a big, big thing in California, as you know, the next ten years. So we're trying to do our our best, create more jobs, more opportunities, working with partners like Job Train, Nova Works. The list goes on and on, but we've enlisted six community based partners that are actually getting grant funding to work with us to create the methods, which is really exciting. And in this group, actually, the larger group, there's thirty-three active community based organizations that meet the second Monday of the month. We feed them lunch. We have them help us with what we're creating. The next big thing we're going to be working on is an economic mobility plan with the city of Redwood City. And that's going to be awesome because it's going to include the 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 community within the framing of that. So I'm really excited with what this group is going to create because I think it's going to be an example of what can happen with collective impact work, right? We also do professional development in that group. How much time do I have? I don't see a timer, sorry. I'm good. All right, cool. So the Oya Conference, some of the outcomes we've had last year, over four hundred youth attended this conference. So good. They get to really understand like the importance of their identity. Most importantly, they get to learn about opportunities in their community. It's right before like summer hits. So we were able to actually hire people for Parks and Recs jobs. Last year, as you'll see, the PACE program created a hundred jobs this past summer. A hundred jobs in partnership with Parks and Rec, in partnership with Powell Center, Redwood City Together, Friends for Youth. We all got together and said, what can we get ready for Oya to recruit? And from Oya, four hundred kids, you know, there was many of those kids that got jobs that went to Oya. And it's a really wonderful event. If you've never been, go, just go for a little bit. And it's amazing. It's a really wonderful event. This is the PACE program, which has has been a really important part into our work. Most recently, we partnered with Powell Center and the city of Redwood City to create non-traditional programs for youth of that were part of the bike life movement and are part of the bike life movement. Primarily youth who don't feel like sometimes they belong in the city, sometimes feel stigmatized, sometimes don't feel heard. Well, you know, we heard, we heard them make some noise the day that Malala was here in downtown. And we responded that following week by saying, hey, here's some pizza. Can we talk? Can we co-create this this some some activity for you? Because we get it. Mel's Bull's not here. Discovery Zone's not here. Malibu's not here. Those of you who are from Redwood know what this is. And those are all amenities that were taken away from some of our youth when we're thinking about the development. And so we jumped in and we literally invited the youth, the bike life youth to City Hall. And we asked them, how does a world like you look? And they talked about jobs. They talked about mentorship. They talked about ride outs to different cities and back with food and jumping houses. And what did we do? We responded. I just give major kudos to our board, our executive team, our leadership council. Because through that, we were able to get the partnership of of police, of fire, of Parks and Rec, of many other community based organizations and partnering with Live in Peace out of East Palo Alto, who has been doing this for a while. Them coaching us up and really getting us to where we're at. Jobs created, better relationships with law enforcement, better relationship with counselors. You didn't hear a lot of reports hopefully this past summer around youth truance. So that this was one of the reasons why. And so I'm very excited to talk about PACE. Safe Routes to School. Always, always a joy. We actually have been doing a lot of work around the Youth Unlimited Program. Alisa McAvoy is very, very active in our Safe Routes to School program. And without her and our nineteen other members, we weren't, we wouldn't be able to say, we started the pilot here in Redwood City, okay? I'm gonna brag a little bit on on this group. And the pilot and Michelle's in the room. So without Michelle, we wouldn't be able to get it done. So thank you, Michelle, and your wonderful team. We literally were the pilot that led a movement in Samtrans to now it being countywide, y'all. Every kid is now going to get a pass if they need it to get to school. And it started here. Yeah, that's exciting. Clap. That's exciting. We were the leader. Yeah, we were the leader. And so again, thanks to your team. Amazing job. We wouldn't have been able to do it without the district. And youth leadership, as you heard, these are our wonderful youth who really inspire us to do our work effectively. We have twelve young youth promotoras. Some of them are bike life kids and honestly, all they need is a chance. And we have a full year curriculum for them. They're, they've reached over, they reached over five thousand community members last year. And not just reach giving out a flyer, they talked to them about what the flyer was. That's the difference, right? And our next goal is to create like basically tracking of like follow through of the resources that they provide. That's the next step. But they're working on interpersonal and interpersonal skills. This is just a great opportunity for youth to expand their wings. And community support. We got state recognition last year, y'all. Senator Josh Becker gave us an award. I know Elisa's there. You were great giving the the word, Elisa. Just talking about the work that we're doing. I think Redwood City Together was poised to be in the state space. We just needed to get out there a little more. And I think we have just the right team that I feel is going to help us reach certain benchmarks that we haven't seen met yet. And excited to serve, excited to share. Thank you for your time. Open it up to any questions.
Thank you very much. I'll go ahead and open it up to my colleagues too. Any questions, comments?
I'll go. Wow. Yeah, wow. I can't believe you've been there four years already. That just flew by, but thank you so much for all of your work. I'll be honest, when I came on the board, Redwood City twenty twenty, I was like, I don't really know what they do. Like a bunch of people get in a room and talk. And with your leadership, I feel like you've brought so much clarity to what the collaborative does. And and I can explain it to people, which is huge. So just thank you so much for everything you've done. I think your work with the, what'd you call them, the bike, the bike?
Bike life.
Bike life?
Youth.
Was phenomenal. When I heard how quickly you and your team acted and got out there and connected with them, I was floored because it was literally like the next day. And I actually was thinking about it just yesterday. I was driving up Roosevelt and I, there were no bike kids hanging out and driving down, riding down the middle of the road and trying to crash into cars. You know, that's that's your work right there. And I really, really appreciate it. And then lifting them up and giving them leadership positions, I think is huge and is life changing for them and for Redwood City. So I just really appreciate everything you've done. There was one other thing, but that's okay.
Thank you, Janet.
Thank you.
Thank you for being a part of the work.
Yeah, thanks Rafael for the presentation and of course for all the work that you do. It's clear that you have a lot going on to sort of get, you know, go after your goals to improve education, wellness and equity. It's really neat to see how that works. I loved hearing about Oya and PACE. And on the bike life one, the the thing that really stuck out to me is that you know, a lot of people looked at that that situation and all they saw was problem and a need for compliance. And you saw unique gifts and how do we go in and really capitalize on those unique gifts? And that's what we want to do in education. And it's just such a a great story. We see it happen in our classrooms and a lot of the times. And it's just great to see that kind of kind of going through and the lifting up kids and understanding that they have that. You know, they have those unique gifts that that, you know, maybe they're not being, you know, expressed in the right way and just need a little nudge to be able to show how to do it. So yeah, thanks for all the work that's going on here. And thank you, Alisa and Janet and Cecilia and John. And I'm sure I'm missing a bunch of other people. We've got Amy online. They're here, actually, part of this. That's also part of Redwood City Together and Redwood City twenty twenty before that. I appreciate all that work.
Yeah, I just had to get, have a moment before I and I was actually looking up, I was trying to remember. So I just realized, I think I'm going into my tenth year on the Leadership Council. And I will say I've gotten as much out of it as I've given. It's one of those most inspirational groups that we have. I also agree that Rafael, you have just risen risen the bar of what we can accomplish together the last four years with your leadership. So thank you. I'm glad you finally got a chance to come here. I know we've been talking about it for a while. And not only do we have some of the public here and on Zoom, but these are all recorded. So I know some people will go and look at it. And and also I'm often sending people to the website and I kind of feel like, wow, this is a great PowerPoint. This will be another place that we can share. Hey, go watch this recording, you know, what you just gave us. You know, I've been so excited about so many things that we've done over the almost forty years now, right? And I was thinking, I think one of the other incubators was the community schools, right? Now that was but that was
Amy was part of that.
That's right.
I'm not mistaken. Amy was part of that.
Right. So that would go back. I mean, it's been ours for a long time, but I was thinking, you know, just as another example for the community, that's a huge program. I mean, that's such an important part of who we are as a school district, our community schools. So again, there's been a lot of stuff that is either formally incubated through a working group or work that we're doing or just through the connections that we make, right? When we're meeting together and you have those side conversations and you realize, okay, we can partner on this. And I do want to give a huge shout out to all of our partners, some of which are on Zoom and some are here today. And the whole list, I mean, we could not, our school district couldn't do what we do without all of our partners, right? I mean, you know, having been at TAF School most recently, right? We really rely on the partners to get things done. And you've been great at really supporting the schools and the work. So thank you, not only to you, but your whole team. You've hired great staff over the years. And you're right, I think most recently, in case you didn't know, Jackie Campos, who was in charge of Safe Routes to Schools most recently is now what MIT Community?
Yeah.
School Coordinator. So that's a great example of somebody who continues to give back and will, you know, get to be with students every day. I just wanted to give a shout out again. I know people already mentioned the PACE program. But again, I mean, instead of just immediately going in with enforcement and, you know, just sort of sending individuals on one path. We said, no, here's a group of, you know, youth, young adults who want to be part of the community and we need to embrace that and be inclusive. And it's amazing what you've been able to do. And I'm also really excited about how that relates to the workforce development. And I know it's something that we've been talking about for a long time. And I feel like, I think the pace, you know, that all this stuff happening with youth and bicycling and the PACE program has really kind of kicked us into thinking, what more can we do with workforce development? And I'm on a couple of other nonprofit boards who are talking about the same sort of thing. And these are ones that aren't even part of our partnership. So I think we all know that we need to, we need to tap into every individual we have who lives in our community and build up those skills and those assets because we need them in the workforce, right? And we want them to be part of community. So anyway, thank you for all you're doing. Really appreciate it. Thank you to our partners, Amy. It's great to see you online and those of you in the audience, really appreciate it. And also I want to give a shout out actually to Dr. Baker. The last couple of years, really stepping it up, particularly with the, what do we call the executive?
Team, yeah.
Team. So Dr. Baker's been in charge of that, working closely with Rafael and our other partners and really appreciate all that you've done. Because again, this, I think this last year has been one of our best years. Every year is a good year. So hopefully we continue with that. Anyway, thank you.
I want to echo that. Thank you, Dr. Baker, for your kind mentorship and support. Seeing the the world, the the way that we need to see it sometimes as systems engineers, I like to say. I think your guidance has been amazing over the past years. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I appreciate the presentation. I did write some things down because I didn't want to forget. Obviously, kudos to you. I've told you before too, but I love your personality, your interaction with your team, like how well you interact with them, how you motivate them. And obviously, I think a leader, that's what a leader, a great leader is, right? It's not just follow me. It's like you, I mean, I've been to the meetings where you're actually even like helping serve food or organize the table. And I'm just like, okay, maybe you should be over here talking to people, but you don't, right? So I think that means a lot. And then just looking at the goals, you know, there's a word says, let me see, so I won't. The goals for Redwood City Together is let's see. It operates with the intention of making positive change. I think it's really not an intention. It really is happening. The true meaning of intent is a wish that one means to carry out. And I want to say, well, Redwood City Together team is making a difference in our community. It is inclusive and collaborates extremely well with their partners to improve our community. And then going to the Data Council Working Group, again, led by our very own Dr. Baker with the John W. Gardner Center, working on strategies. And as we know, if we teach good strategies and find strategies, good things will happen. And again, we see that happening with Redwood City Together and again, with the partners. I guess on a personal level, I do appreciate that Janet actually gave me the chance to be part of this team. Because again, I, as you guys know, I work for a neighboring district. And so I had seen the interaction because, you know, I'm behind the scenes there. And so I always wanted to, but again, it's gets kind of in the way of work, right? And so how can I make this work? And so, you know, I made it work. So I appreciate that for having the opportunity. So I think the entire team is excellent. And again, of course, the leadership just means a lot. So I really want to say thank you for giving Redwood City the opportunity to work together, to collaborate, not just with our students, but we're reaching out the older students. You know, the kids are in the community. Again, I feel just like Alisa said. Those kids really just need one hand to take the first step. I've always said that, right? Where as soon as put a step together, they're just going to continue up the ladder. And so I think Redwood City does a really good job at that. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much, everyone.
So Rafael, before you sit down, well, Amy's here, part of the audience saw us also. Five years, yeah, five years. It was five years ago that I've known Amy for many, many years, but five Five years, yeah, five years. It was five years ago that, um, I've known Amy for many, many years, but five years I got to sit next to Amy, um, at the executive team when I've, you know, I should say nine years ago, uh, when I started. But those first five years, as Amy knows, were quite difficult for myself and also for her, because we were looking for something that would move in a different direction than what we were going. And I remember, um, my predecessor, um, telling me, I don't know if this is the place where you should still be when I leave, but you're going to have to decide that yourself, you know, with, with Redwood City 2020 at the time. So let's move forward after those five years. And I got to be on the interview team with, for Raphael. And we were looking for a person who not only knew how to manage and how to work well and bring people together, but someone who had the energy and who definitely knew a path that they wanted to get to with involving the communities and the partners. And you have taken our guidance and you ran with it. So, um, for myself, and I'm sure Amy would say the same thing. I'll let her, you can unmute yourself in a moment. It, it's been great. It's been great to see where Redwood City Together is now compared to where it was nine years ago when I first started being part of the executive team. And it's because of your leadership and you listen. Especially when I say, okay, okay, he's, he's an energizer, an energizer bunny. Let's, 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 let's slow this down a little bit and concentrate here and there. He, he does, but then he still keeps going. And here we are today. So uh, thank you for, for all you've done for our community. It's, it's really a, a big plus, especially when we were going through the pandemic. And I know, um, you worked very closely with the Gardner Center and Amy to, to get out there and make sure that people were, um, completing the surveys and so forth and the information that we needed so that we knew what we had to do, you know, for our kids and our families. So
Thank you.
Kudos to you. A lot of kudos.
Appreciate it. You know, one of my pastors says, really, and I'll share a little quote, love looks and love listens.
And I listened.
And I know you all do too. So I want to give you the kudos as well for doing that for our community members. Long nights. But a lot of wonderful productive work.
Hey, Amy, do you want to say something? Yeah, she does. So.
I just want to, um, underscore all the kudos and, and also Superintendent Baker's reference to history. It's amazing how much you've accomplished and, um, in such a, really a short time. And, um, I really have appreciated how much, uh, other leaders in the community know about Redwood City Together and they know you and they seek you and the support of Redwood City Together out. And I think the bike, um, the pace project is a perfect example of that. That really appreciate your leadership. Thanks for letting me be part of this tonight.
Oh, it's a pleasure. Thank you, Dr. Kristin. Appreciate you. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you.
So, uh, moving on to our next item, 11.2 Mental Health Board Presentation.
Yes. And now we have our great mental health lead counselor, Ana Paula Gare, who is going to give us an update on what's been taking place. It's all good work. And without her and the team that she leads, it would not be where we are today. I'll turn it over to you. Push the button. There you go.
Perfect. Good evening, everyone. Before I get started with all of my fun stuff, I'm going to hand it off to Dr. Kristen Geiser from the John W. Gardner Center. And they're going to highlight a lot of our partnerships with Stanford. We have Kristen here, we have Amy on video. And then from the Center for Youth Mental Health and Wellbeing, we also have Dr. Yoshi. So they're going to take some turns kind of sharing about our partnership and then I'll jump back in. So I'm going to turn it over to Kristen.
Okay.
Thank you. And I'm actually going to pass it to Amy for an opening word.
Thank you. Yes, thank you very much. So first of all, good evening and, um, thank you for inviting us. Apologies for not being there in person, but I'm very much with you and with Redwood City every day. I want to begin by thanking you for your partnership for over 20 years. It's really quite something. We have learned so much alongside you as fellow travelers. We hope that we have been adding value and your trust and confidence in us. Really, it means the world and it is the reason we do the work we do. We appreciate this longstanding connection and we couldn't do this work if we didn't have your support. Our collective work is, is really a lot about your leadership. And so we are very grateful for that. And we, uh, uh, appreciate the opportunity to talk with you tonight. So with that, I'll hand it over to Deputy Director of the Gardner Center, Kristen Geiser.
Thank you, Amy. Um, and thank you again, Dr. Baker, for inviting us to be here tonight. Board of Trustees, Administrative Team, um, Michelle Griffin, Ana Paula Gare, the counselors who were present with us. And then as, um, has been acknowledged, Dr. Joshi and Shirley Mack from the Center for Youth are also with us online this evening. Um, we couldn't do this without you. Um, and it's really a privilege to be in this partnership with you. So Amy mentioned, we, the Gardner Center's been in partnership with you for over 20 years. But this particular project, it's sometimes hard even for me to keep straight where projects begin and end with Redwood City. But really came to be through conversation four years ago and funding began three years ago, if you can believe. So we've just concluded our third year and we wanted to, um, Ana Paula invited me to offer a couple of highlights of what we've been up to in the most recent year and what we're looking forward to next year. So it's intended to be brief, to be continued anytime you wish. So by way of setting context for those who weren't with us three years ago, um, when we began together, our charge is, in this collaborative was to respond to the district's desire to build capacity to support youth mental health and wellbeing. And it was sort of a rare and beautiful moment where we had a charge to respond and come alongside you and something that really mattered to you. None of us knew how to do yet, but we would figure it out together. Um, and so that's what we've been up to. And so this, this diagram offers a lens on how we think about that, which is it is certainly about, ultimately building district capacity to provide timely and quality care to young people and their families. But it's also about creating the school or setting and district or system conditions to facilitate and optimize that. So we're thinking about this through all three lenses all the time. And I know you are too. So I wanted to offer that as framing. So the next slide offers just a couple of highlights from last year. The first two are ways the Center for Youth in particular has come alongside the district, um, and worked side by side to think about the quality of care provided to students in your schools. And that happens in a lot of ways, but two are through bimonthly, uh, clinical consultancies. And another is through the provision of an onsite psychiatric fellow who was at Hoover one morning a week last year. We conducted a follow-up implementation study to further document and understand the role of counselors, which were new two years ago. So we wanted to see how that role was evolving. Um, and we interviewed 19 site administrators and counselors to try and understand the lead or early indicators of impact in that work, all of that teeing us up to try and evaluate that work somehow. Uh, the partnership was recognized by Stanford University last year with an award in the spring. And the Office of the Provost, if you haven't heard yet, has extended funding for two more years. So we get to keep going. Which is very exciting. Um, the next slide offers a couple of highlights from this year's implementation study. It will be out for you to see in a week or two. But the gist is that we're finding that counselors are engaging in a number of activities to bolster individual setting and system capacity related to mental health. There are early indicators of progress in all three areas. And there's early evidence from the interviews that these benefits are coming together in ways that, um, administrators and teachers and counselors are attributing to increased quality and quantity of instructional time. So students are missing class less often, returning more ready to engage, um, if and as needed. We end the report by offering some opportunities for next steps and we'll be happy to think with you about those. Looking ahead to this year, the Center for Youth will continue their bimonthly clinical consultancies. They've expanded onsite support with an additional fellow. So now you have fellows at Hoover and MIT. We'll build upon both implementation studies, think more about data collection, evaluating impact, and provide thought partnership as needed at sort of that system level that we've mentioned. So it's a pleasure. It has been, it will be, um, to be continued. And with that, I'll pass it to Dr. Joshi for any final comments.
Can you all hear me okay?
Yeah, we can.
Yes.
Great. Well, thank you so much, Kristen, Deputy Director, Geiser, Dr. Gerstein, Dr. Baker, members of the board. What a privilege for us to be in this partnership with you all and, um, as Amy said, walking alongside and learning with you. When we have our meetings, um, in particular, these consultancies that Shirley Mack from our center convenes with Ana Paula and Michelle and the two site leads, myself and our new faculty member, um, Apurva Bhut, who just started joining and will be transitioning in. It's, um, it's really, it, it is a privilege for us, you know, in the university setting. We are, um, we have a platform. We can bring our experience and knowledge, you know, sort of from a book standpoint, but as has been seen over 20 years, where, where we really engage and where we really learn. And what keeps us coming back is the kind of everyday interactions, not only with students and families, but also with staff. And, um, I have to say that the mental health, um, leads at these two sites, Hoover and MIT are really, are really good. We just started working with Mark this year. The work with Heather has been outstanding and it's been great for us as a training team. Now these fellows, their clinical fellows are fully licensed, they're, they're psychiatrists. They are often board certified already. They're doing work in child adolescent work, child adolescent psychiatry. And more than anything, they are, they are engaging with families and with school staff to try and understand. You know, what is getting in the way of this young person accessing curriculum? And what we've learned in this partnership is that you all embody the idea in word and indeed, and in action and in your beautiful, um, marquee, meet, choose, love. Everyone needs mental health, mental illness, mental health problems. Do not discriminate based on your newcomer status, your visa status. Um, your, you know, your mother's highest level of education, mental health is part of overall health and our students have to be healthy enough to learn. And our teachers have to be healthy enough and versatile enough with the tools they need to reach and teach every student. So if you think about the oxygen mask metaphor, the teachers have to put that on. And Dr. Baker talks about this with the staff and school leads do, and Ana Paula with the other MHCs with the teachers. And yes, the mask is there so that they can be there for their students and be there for their families. But it's also there for themselves. Taking care of oneself as a teacher is an end unto itself. And I, I just love seeing how this district values its staff as much as the students and parents. And I come to these board meetings around the nine Bay area counties. And, um, you know, it's often on the marquee, um, staff wellbeing, wellbeing for all, but you know, it's there maybe in, in word, but not necessarily, you know, they can talk the talk, can they walk the walk? And you all, especially in a K, a district where this, these kinds of early interventions are so important. You are the embodiment of that. And I'm, I feel very fortunate as someone on this team and someone who the Office of the President has entrusted our team at the Center for Youth Mental Health, Wellbeing and the Gardner Center to continue this for another couple of years. And, um, we're just so thankful for all that you've taught us and all that we will continue to learn and do together. So with that, I'll, I'll, um, just thank you all and turn it over to our, our dear leader, Ana Paula.
Thank you. We could not do what we do without our partnership with Stanford. They have really, at the beginning of this program, two years ago, really helped us build a lot of structure and helped us build our goals and how we were going to get there. And now that we're up and running, they still, they're still helping us figure out what's next. How do we get there? How can we make it better? So thank you to all of our partners. Before I get going, I want to highlight some of the counselors that are here tonight. I don't know if you've met them all, but we have Diane from Orion. Just want to raise. We have Vicky from Adelante. Laura from Roosevelt. And Mary Ann from Henry Ford. You might remember her from her mindful minute during her school presentation. Yes. All right. So today I'm kind of here to share what the counselors have been up to over the past year. And so there's three data sources that I'm going to break down. The first is just the counseling services. What was provided? Who were they provided to? And then we did, we have a pre and post of the student survey. And then we also, uh, surveyed teachers for the first time. So this year we served over 2,200 students. So this is up significantly. It's up about 68% from the previous year. So we were definitely able to get a lot more kids in the door last year than the first year of the program. We were also able to provide about 42% more services total. So I think that's just due to having a year to kind of work out the kinks a little bit, get running. And when August hit last year, we were able to just get started. So I think that's a testament to year two versus year one. This is just a little chart of kind of how many students per school site received services. So the blue line is the first year of the program. The red line is the second year. There's some dips and stuff. We had some maternity leaves and some coverages. So, but every single school had an increase, which I think is the important part. These are the total amount of services provided. So counselors provided over 7,000 individual therapy sessions, which is a whole lot. Uh, and as well as check-ins and SEL and group and crisis. So there were, there were a lot of services provided to students. This is the breakdown of how many students received a specific service. So over 1,700 students received at least one check-in from a counselor. This is just a breakdown of who we have on our campuses providing clinical services. So the district counselors are in blue, One Life is in red, and then Star Vista is in yellow. I'm saying it should be 120 if they're fully staffed the past two years. Those positions have not been fully staffed. So we're working in, with them this year to try to get that support on sites. In terms of tier one, there were a lot of tier one interventions. So there were over 1,700 SEL lessons happened, happening in the classrooms delivered by counselors. This does not include SEL lessons delivered by teachers. So this is just provided by counselors, lots of lunch bunches, GSAs, school clubs, and then staff wellness and parent engagement, which is something we're looking to increase this year. In terms of check-ins, the average length of a check-in is 26 minutes. This is the first year we've been able to kind of gather this type of data. Sometimes we get feedback that teachers feel like students are pulled out of the classroom a lot. And this is really tangible information to be like, you know, if 25 minutes means that for the rest of the day, they're able to stay in class and able to focus, those were 25 minutes really well spent. In terms of who's accessing the check-ins, it seems like fifth and eighth grade, if you kind of think about the K5s and the K8s, the older students are the ones more often requesting it. In terms of why they're requesting it, peer relationships and anxiety are kind of the two big ones. The other category is really high. So I, at the end of the year, I asked the counselors, you know, what, what are you using when you click other? And the four main answers were transitions. So, you know, going from PE back to class, lunch, back to class, class or task avoidance, you know, what's going on? Why don't you want, why don't you want to do your working class? Conflict with school staff and emotion, just basic emotion regulation. And so for this year, there's no other option. I added those four. So we'll be able to maybe have a little more nuanced responses for this year. What's really incredible is that students are referring themselves for check-ins. This is really, really incredible to see that the vast majority of check-ins are being requested by the students themselves. You know, we still have some teachers prompting like, hey, would you like to see a counselor? And the student says, yes. And that's great. But I think it's really a testament to this program that students know that they're there, are seeking them out, are being proactive and taking care of themselves. Um, these two little munchkins are actually Hoover students. So I thought you might appreciate their little zen picture. In terms of individual therapy, again, a lot of students, six, six hundred seventy-two students received individual therapy. Our goal is short-term therapy, so we, we kind of aim for ten to twelve sessions. The average ended up being eleven. That doesn't mean that nobody goes over twelve. There are some kids that received twenty, twenty-five sessions and some kids that got, you know, four, five, six. We kind of aim to keep it short-term so that we have the capacity for those that may need the long-term, that we can't link to an outside service because of insurance, because of language, whatever it might be. And this has worked really well. In terms of individual therapy by grade level, kind of upward trajectory, which makes sense, the older you get, the easier it is to kind of sit down and have conversations about your feelings. So this, this tracks. In terms of referrals, anxiety and behavior were the two big ones. And again, if you think about older students, anxiety kind of becomes more prominent as you get into middle school. What's really great about this is that parents are the primary referrers. So that means that parents are aware that these services are on campus. They feel comfortable asking for the service. They know that their kids are in good hands by requesting the service. So this was really, really encouraging to see. Most students were ended counseling because they met their goals. Sometimes at the end of the school year, you know, if a kid started meeting with a counselor in April, there wasn't quite enough time by the first week of June to really say, we met our goals, we're done. So sometimes the school ends, in that case, the counselors do try to provide warm handoffs. They'll make contact with a parent and say, would you like a warm handoff? We can use carousel. It's like, what insurance do you have? What are your options? Some parents will choose to go down that route and some parents will be like, you know, for the two months, I think my kid is doing okay, we'll be fine, but can you check in with him in August? And we're like, sure, no problem. So those are kind of the options we give parents at the end of the school year. In terms of when students or parents terminate the services, right? So it's not necessarily counselor or school year initiated. Sometimes it's just the student feels better, even though they didn't meet their goals. The student's like, you know what? I'm feeling pretty good. And we're like, all right, like, we're still here if you ever want to come back. And we never want a kid to feel like they have to be in there because they need to meet their goal. Right? If the goal is that they feel better, they got empowered, they got some skills, then we kind of set them loose again. Other examples were just, sometimes students felt more forced by teachers or parents to be, to go see a counselor, to go meet with a counselor. After a couple of sessions, they're like, I really don't want to be here. I'm only here because someone made me. Which is not how we want to engage in counseling services. It's really optional. We don't mandate anything. So that's sometimes some kids were like, you know, I, I don't really want to be here. And we're like, well, you know, we have to respect that. That's part of autonomy. And that also builds rapport with the students because if they feel like we're listening to them and what their needs are, they're more likely to come back when they actually need us. Group therapy, we provided a little less group therapy than we did the first year. I think part of the reason for that is that we significantly increased our tier one interventions. So a lot of things that might have necessitated group therapy were addressed with SEL lessons, with school-wide campaigns, things and check-ins. Right? We, I think the increased number of check-ins decreased kids maybe holding on to things and maybe needing group therapy. As kind of the opposite of the individual therapy, usually it's the younger kids that benefit most from the group. As you get older, you're less likely to open up and be vulnerable in front of your peers. And so typically, group therapy is used more for the younger kids. Social skills and peer relationships, again, with the younger kids, makes sense. These were really highly teacher referred. So a goal with the counselors for this year is to increase parent referrals for groups. A way to do that would be to let parents note, let, let's say, right, Hoover's going to run a second grade social skills group for boys. A goal would be for the counselor to like, put that in the newsletter, put that out to parents and be like, hey, if this is a group that you think your child would participate, would benefit participating in, please let us know so that we can put them in the group. And being a little more proactive with engaging parents that way. Oftentimes you don't think of, you know, asking my kid to be put in a group, right? And so if we kind of put that out there, what the intention of the group is, what the age group, what the benefits are, we might get more parent engagement that way. And sometimes we can get the student services a lot quicker than putting them on a waitlist for individual therapy. For most of the groups, the students have met their goal. In terms of crises, we had roughly around the same number of crises as the first year. The average length of time it took to assess a crisis was a little over an hour. So over the school year, that was about a hundred and eighty-one hours of work addressing crises at the school. Thirteen students were referred for hospital evaluation. One was hospitalized and two were referred to an IOP program. Thank, thank goodness to our relationship with Dr. Shashank Yoshi, that hospitalization worked seamlessly. They went to Stanford, the on-call psychiatrist gave me a call. I was able to put them in touch with the school counselor. And within like thirty minutes of the student arriving there, the counselor and the psychiatrist had touched base, which is the most ideal situation for that student and for their family. Intensive outpatient program. Probably unsurprisingly, our highest number of crises are from seventh and eighth grade. These are some pictures I just wanted to highlight from the work that's being done. At Hoover, this is our counselor Heather leading a Camochis SEL lesson. She does these in grades K through two. And then just, they had a mental health campaign on campus in May. At Henry Ford, Mary Ann is the queen of lunch bunches. And a lot of tier one projects, there's a buddy bench. When we sent the survey to the students, a lot of the Henry Ford students mentioned really liking the buddy benches and maybe wanting more. At Atlanta Selby, Vicky started the peer mediators. So it was a select group of students that she trained. And so then now they have vests, they have lanyards, they have, they've got a little cart. Peacemakers, I'm so sorry, peacemakers. They have a little cart. And so they're there to help their peers solve conflicts. So they don't necessarily have to go to adults and they can help each other. That's had a great success. The students also in the survey really liked the peacemakers. A lot of students were like, can I do it next year in the survey? At Roosevelt, Laura is the master of school campaigns. Next week is mental health week at Roosevelt. So every day at lunch, there's going to be an activity. So these are just some examples of things that Laura has done at Roosevelt. And at Orion, this is just the really comfy cozy counseling space that's there and a kindness quilt outside one of the classrooms. So in terms of the survey data, so this is direct information we got from students and teachers. So we have a pre and post from the students. We first asked them questions in October and then went back with the same questions and a couple extra in May. So we asked them again, do you know who your school, who your counselors are on campus? We have eighty percent saying yes, which is really, so four out of five students know who their counselors are. Which we did see a little bit of an increase from the beginning of the year. I think most importantly, we saw an increase in sixth grade. That was the grade that was like lower than everyone. So that means, you know, it's still something we need to work on at the beginning of the year to make sure that our sixth graders in middle school know where to go to find these resources, but it does show that towards the end of the school year, that's something that they learn. Do you know where to go to find your counselor? Again, over about eighty percent said yes, which is absolutely fantastic. And every school had an increase just about, say the same or increased. It, well, would you feel comfortable? My slide didn't change. There it is. Would you feel comfortable asking to meet with a counselor to talk about your feelings? We still have, you know, over seventy-five percent saying yes. We understand there's still some stigma, there's still some hesitation. You know, are you going to tell my parents, you know, some worries? But to have over seventy-five percent of students say that they feel comfortable talking to a counselor is a huge achievement. I asked for, in the October one, I asked, had you seen a counselor on campus last year? For the May one, I asked, did you see a counselor on campus this year? So we saw a huge increase in students saying yes. We were also curious, where did you see a counselor? So students could pick more than one. So most students saw their counselor just walking around campus, you know, which is the goal. We want them to be visible. We want them to be accessible. We want, that's how students know who you are. We, a lot of them saw them in their office for counseling in SEL lessons. Some never saw them, but they also selected other options, which said that they did. And then during lunch activity or school club. These are just kind of some examples. I was curious, right? Like, what did you learn? Because one thing is like, I know who they are, I know I'm getting the service, but what did you learn? This first one I thought was really cool. This is just verbatim from what they submitted. So they're really, they're really holding on to the techniques and the skills that they're learning in therapy. So these are all just kind of learning coping skills. It's okay to be angry. A lot of less like self-judgment and criticism about the feelings they're having. How has having a counselor on campus changed anything for you? Here's a little peacemaker comment. I think in general, there was also a lot of comments from students being like, I didn't, I didn't talk to a counselor, but my friend didn't help them. So there were a lot of just reflections about students acknowledging that while it didn't change anything for them, it changed for their peers. I really liked the last comment, which was not really because I'm pretty sure we've always had one, so I don't know a different option. And how cool is that to kind of feel like I've always had a counselor? So I don't know what it would be like to not have one. Is there anything you wish the counselors at your school would do to help you or your classmates? There was a lot of comments about wanting more counselors, wanting more time with counselors. So, you know, having like a corner of panic kind of equated that to like a peace, like a calm corner and like a classroom. So maybe that's something that we can talk to some teachers about. One of the counselors handed out encouraging notes and letters. So that's something a student really enjoyed. And then again, just kind of having more capacity. I included the two unrelated ones just because there were a lot of them of wanting snacks and help with homework. So I get it, counselors, academic counselors, some schools have both. It's a little confusing. In regards to teachers, sent it out in May, we got a hundred and forty-eight teacher responses. We asked them specifically about the, the district counselors. I know that there's a lot of partner counselors that we have on site, so we really wanted to focus on their relationships with the district counselors. So do you know who your school's counselor is? Yes, was the big response. Do you know where you're going to find them? Ninety-eight percent said yes. Do you feel comfortable going to your school's counselor for support? Ninety-four percent said yes. The other five percent was mostly because I think they thought that we were asking them if they felt comfortable going to them for their own problems, which understandable if you say no, they're your peer and your colleague. And then other ones said no, just because they'd been introduced in like a school assembly, but never had a one-on-one conversation. So it wasn't super comfortable to approach. But again, that was only five percent. If you have a student in your class who received counseling services, do you think it was helpful? I have this down, yet it was a yes of eighty-nine percent. So the maybes and no were few and far between. So almost ninety percent of students felt that it was helpful. Teachers felt that it was helpful for their students. Did those services help the students stay engaged in school? Eighty-three percent said yes. Some said no, some said that, you know, I understand that my student had really difficult behaviors and I knew that counseling wasn't, wasn't going to like change things right away. So, but still eighty-three percent of teachers said yes, that it was helpful, that they were able to stay engaged in school. If the class received an SEL lesson, were there benefits to the students? Eighty-eight percent said yes. So these are all just kind of statements, if you wanted to like read through them and have some examples. I included all the yes and nos and maybes, just for an accurate representation of what everyone said. But it was a strong positive response from teachers. We asked what benefits they're experiencing from having a counselor on campus. So a lot enjoy having a resource, a thought partner. They enjoy having access to someone with expertise in mental health and having peace of mind that students are able to receive the services they need onsite. The other, some clicked other, and these were kind of some examples of what they said. They enjoyed being able to share resources. Right? We don't want to negate the fact that teachers have been doing their job for a long time. And sometimes they're familiar with resources and connections. And sometimes they know families a lot better than we do when we've only been here for two years. And that's a huge resource. So really taking advantage of that and working together as a partnership. You know, when there's a fifty-one fifty, when there's a mental health crisis, being able to just hand it to the counselor and know that it's going to be handled correctly and well and patiently. A huge component of a crisis isn't just the assessment, right? Figure out, are you low risk? Are you medium risk? You need to go to the hospital. It's then sitting down with the parent, explaining what's happening, walking them through the process. This is what you can expect. This is what's going to happen when your kid comes back to school. And being able to sit there and do that without, you know, principals and teachers are so busy. You know, and being able to sit with someone uninterrupted, who has your undivided attention, really makes that experience very different. Is there anything you'd like to see stay the same or change about counseling services for next year? Again, lots of feedback, a lot of teachers asking for more support or just wanting it to stay the same and not go anywhere. A lot, some teachers kind of wanted more feedback from counselors, which is definitely something that we can work on, like, you know, is there something that I can do in my classroom to support that you're, support the work that you're doing in counseling, which is something that we can increase for sure. And that's it. I mean, I say that's it, but I just, yeah, I want to credit, the counselors are doing absolutely incredible work. You know, this year we're off to the races again. And a lot of Ks are already full. So I'm sure we're going to get a lot of interesting stories and data for this year as well. I'm happy to answer. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much again for the presentation. I think I just want to, I, I usually do pass it on to my colleagues, but I think what I want to say is obviously, thank you so much to all the counselors for being there for our students, but I'm wondering, do our counselors get some type of counseling service as well? Because I'm assuming they go home and they need some time to decompress and maybe at times even a massage or something. But I'm just wondering, like, how much stress you guys actually take home? And are we actually, or are you guys being taken care of? I mean, I, I understand that is your job, but I'm just curious.
Yeah. Do any of you want to answer?
I can share.
Yeah, go for it.
Um, I teach coping skills to kids every day, so I have to go, I have to abide by what I teach. And so I got like a regiment of my self-care and I have a big support system. And I'm able to like disconnect after I come out. I have to know my boundaries, right? Like I can help when I'm there. But when I'm out, you know, there's only so much that we can do over at home on our couch. So just coping, because I think it's the best thing for me.
I know for me, one thing that I have found helpful is we have meetings weekly. And it's good to come together and share and normalize, you know, the experiences that we're all having. We as human beings are so similar. And so it's good to know you're not alone and other counselors, other students are facing the same things. So for me, that's helpful.
And I was going to add, you know, I think self-care is really important. You find what gives you joy. And you, you do it and you, when you leave work, you leave it there. Very intentional, you know, I have like a little rock and I, you know, say goodbye, shed the day, just kind of go home. I echo what Diane said, we just have an amazing leader who helps and we have such a great team. So it's not work really. It's, you know, for me, being in the district as a teacher and then moving as a counselor is just giving me so much joy. It's like, you know, I love what I do. So it's really not work.
Thank you, guys.
That was a great question, Cecilia. Thank you for asking that. I, I hope the audience, could you hear the counselors? I realize they were not at the microphone a little bit, okay? Anyway, that was a great presentation. And I know I already sent you an email. After I read it, I was just so excited to see the data. You know, the quantitative data, but then also the comments and just remembering where we were. I mean, what you didn't have in there was year zero, right? We're just looking, we're just comparing year one to year two. I'm thinking back when my children were in the school district and looking at their peers and what was there, we might've had a counselor, a couple of counselors who kind of roamed or, I mean, there really wasn't very much. I think there was one counselor, half counselor at Clifford at the time. I mean, really, we, we, I mean, almost zero, you know, certainly compared to what we have now. Or it was teachers trying to do the best they could. We had, you know, what? Anyway, it is, it is amazing. I mean, I think we just have to really congratulate ourselves, our school district, all of the partners. Thank you for those of you who are on Zoom and those of you here in the audience, our employees. I mean, Anna Paula, your leadership, all of our counselors. I mean, it is, it is amazing. So I won't go over all the data, but I did have one question. Could you talk a little bit about this? I, I, and I'm sorry, I didn't send this to you ahead of time. I just thought about it as you were talking, because I did send her a bunch of questions. She already answered. And I won't go over, but thank you for acknowledging those in your presentation. The staff wellness, because this is something, and actually Cecilia, you got to this in your question. It's something that we've talked about when Patrina has been here to give her wellness conversation. I know it's something our board, our superintendent, our district staff, we're very concerned about staff wellness and it kind of goes to exactly your point, like we all, as adults, we, well, as, as in, as human beings, we all need coping skills, right? And so we know that we're giving them the best we can to our students, but I want to make sure the adults in, in the sphere of influence are also taken care of. So I'd love for you to just talk a little bit about what you're doing. I know that Patrina also has been trying to do stuff. And anyway, I'd love to hear that. So I'd love for you to just talk a little bit about what you're doing. I know that Patrina also has been trying to do stuff, and anyway, I'd love to hear that, and I might have some comments about that.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So a lot of it is just based on school need and school request. So if a principal wants a counselor to kind of talk about self-care, talk about boundaries, talk about mental health, emotion regu- like our, sometimes our own emotion regulation, which is difficult, it's much easier to talk about. It's the child's emotion regulation. A counselor can definitely put a presentation together and talk about it at a staff meeting. That is absolutely something that counselors can do. I think the first two years, we were really focused on just getting our footing with the ser- the direct clinical services. And now that we have more relationships with teachers, we have more relationships with principals. We're able to kind of step in and relate on a different way versus somebody who's like, new, I don't really know you, and you're telling me how to take care of myself, which doesn't always land, right? So now that we're in year three and most of our counselors, this is also their third year, have those relationships with teachers, so we can approach it from a collaborative way and less so like, let me tell you what self-care is. Cause oftentimes we go to self-care and we're like, we sit there for an hour, we listen to how to take care of ourselves, and we leave and like, we still feel the same. So I think that, that's the, the trick and the nuance of doing self-care with staff. Is how do we make it so that it feels like self-care, like you've learned something new and not just heard the same presentation in different words?
Yeah. Well, thank you, and I'm glad that you're thinking about that, and I would just encourage, you know, you and your program, and I know there's other, there's, there's other places in the district off, off, or our district offers offerings where we're thinking about that. But as we know, you know, we're only as good as how we feel about ourselves in terms of how we relate to other people. So anyway, thank you for all you're doing there. Um, thank you, uh, again to the counselors. I mean, it's amazing. Thank you to our partners um, with Stanford. So appreciate you and everybody uh, there on the Zoom. Thank you. I remember when we first met in that room several years ago, and we're kind of brainstorming on how Stanford could support us, and we really came up with such a, what, such a great idea and really making a difference for kids. I, I also just wanted to mention that I was really happy to see, um, you know, more tier one offerings, and I think this works really well with our M T S S, which I know, um, you know, Mike uh, has been involved with and others. But the more we can do in kind of tier one, you know, it's efficient for our resources, first of all, which we always need to think about, and then we're just getting to more students and and then, you know, teachers start to see like how that's working. And anyway, I, I, I just feel like there's a lot of opportunity there. So I think I'll stop. I mean, I'm, I'm just so, so pleased with everything that you're doing, so thank you.
I agree. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. And it was lots of really interesting information in there. Um, and uh, you know, and, and lots of impact that of course is coming through for our students. Thank you to the Gardner Center, Dr. Geiser, Dr. Joshi, Dr. Gerstein. I remember the year one implementation report, uh, sort of had three things that I can kind of, well, I had more than that as opportunities, but one was obviously to get funding, which clearly is happening because we're starting at the year three. The other was to develop the theory of change and strengthen data systems, and so it's really neat to see that coming into fruition and really being able to understand how the um, program is, is impacting students. And then uh, tier one, right, was another one, developing that tier one. So it's neat to see, I'm excited to see what's gonna come out in the year two study. Uh, and what, what'll come there. There's opportunities, obviously, that you had listed there to expand tier one, uh, which is a good one. You know, to expand the capacity to evaluate the outcomes of the data. You know, and then just keep deepening, deepening the integration. Um, it'd be really neat to see how, how that works on this year, um, and what, you know, the implementation study will look like at the end of that one. Obviously, thanks to the counselors, uh, Diane, Vicky, Laura, and Mary Ann. Thanks for being here tonight. Uh, just really, really appreciated. All of the counselors, uh, four out of five students know who you are. Almost a hundred percent of the teachers know who you are. That is, you're, that's just an amazing, that's the baseline work that has to get done to be able to really have the impact. And in our students' voice, one of their comments, you know, you're providing them a safe place to talk. It's just so important, really meaningful. Thank you so much for the work that you're doing there. Uh, I'm, I'm excited about this program. I'm really glad that this has been a priority from the um, administration and that the board generally can always get behind it, um, and that these systems are coming together. Uh, I think it really makes a tremendous difference for the schools and the community.
I'm gonna just say ditto with what my colleagues have said. I don't have a whole lot more to add, but thank you very much um, for your presentation. Um, and, and to the counselors who are here tonight, I thank you for your extra time coming to be with us, and I love the idea of the rock and leaving your, your work behind. I love that. Um, trying to figure out how I can implement that in my life. Um, I'll think about it tonight. Thank you to the partners too, to Stanford, and I'm super excited to hear that the office provost wants to extend it two years. Like that's, that's huge. Um, I mean, it means we're doing something right. We know we're doing something right, so um, it's, it's so exciting. Um, it's been fun to watch this come together and to see the results starting to come from um, this vision that everybody had. Um, I think I was in that first meeting. Yeah. Um, Dr. Baker, thank you for your leadership on this too. It's um, so important, and there are so many districts that their focus is just educating and not, not realizing that you've got to feed your students. You've got to make sure their, their brain is healthy. Otherwise, they're not learning in the classroom. It's not, doesn't matter how many times you go over phonics with them. If they're going through a crisis, they're not gonna learn, so we need to be able to meet them there. Thank you.
So I want to take us back. I think it was four years ago. It was four years ago, Lisa, Janet, myself, Amy, uh, Shashank. Kristin, were you at that meeting, that major meeting? We were embarking on what I was really hoping would take off. But then we got sidetracked a little bit uh, with COVID, and then, I don't know, Shashank and Amy, if you remember the conversation I had with you after I was having calls from principals, calls from teachers, emails, that, you know, the mental health piece is just overwhelming at this point in time. And asking the group, um, you know, we, we're getting all this money from the feds and from the state. And I want to make sure that we have mental health be a priority. And I think it was Shashank, I asked, Shashank, I asked you, I don't know how to do this. Can you help us with this? And he took the ball and started helping us, and Amy also put this program to go together. When you're a doctorate student and you're in education, there is, there are no plans if you want to go in this direction of mental health. You have to seek outside support. The support that we have received from the Gardner Center, the support from Shashank and his, and his group. Kristin, amazing. There is no way we could have done it. We had the dollars, but how do you put it together and what will it look like? And uh, Shashank came up with a plan. And I was not sure we were able to do it in that short time period, if you recall, because we had started talking about this towards that first part. When COVID, we were coming, we were coming off from March to June and coming back. Still virtual, but some schools were starting to come back on to campus. The principal right across from me, who was the principal, was one of the first ones. And I said, we needed this mental health, and they came up with this plan, and it was amazing to see where it has gone from that period of time to where it is right now. Without that partnership, I don't think we could have pulled it off just by ourselves. I, I, I really don't. I really don't. And what that looked like and the type of people we needed to have and what and I remember Shashank coming to me, you need to have a lead counselor. You have got to have a lead. And fantastic lead, um, and, and went through this process with us, and without that assistance, we would not be here with the wonderful counselors we have right now. I thank you every day for everything you do. Our teachers are important, but you're just as important when it comes to mental health. If you don't feel good about yourself, or you've had a crappy day before you've even hit the classroom door, it's not gonna work. So um, it's my goal to make sure that this keeps on. You know, I, I, I valued the people that we have from the Sequoia Healthcare District. But it was not enough. The T, the principals kept saying, it's not enough, it's not enough. And when COVID hit, it just kind of expanded and blew up. So for everyone who has worked and partnered with us, I, my heart goes out to every one of you. Thank you so much for helping our students. It's a big, it's a big, it's a really big lift. And Michelle Griffith, thank you for putting in the many, many hours with me also to help put this together. Amy, great work. Shashank, great work. Thank you so much.
Moving on to item eleven point three, report regarding baseline data for eye ready diagnostic exam results.
And we have Ms. Herera. You wanna start out? And yeah, and I think you have Ms. Jenny. You got it? And then the mic.
Okay, so let me try to get on to share. My partner in crime that always helps me here is not here today. Is, is Jenny on?
Yeah, Jenny's on.
Okay. Hi Jenny. So Jenny will be, we're gonna be going, taking you through um, eye ready um, baseline data for you all to see, as well as our new initiatives. I'm trying to get on to share, but I'm not being allowed. It's not letting me share. Let me see. I know I have it on my desktop too. But when I asked it to share, but look what happens. It's not coming out.
Oh, no, go to basic.
That's where I went. There's a question. There's that.
That's gonna make you log out if you want to share with me.
Okay. Jenny, do you have it?
Yes, I have it. I can share the message.
You wanna try sharing it on your site?
Sure.
I think I need to update my Zoom.
Alright. Does everybody see my eye ready screen?
Yep.
Yes.
Alright, so um, so today, good, first, good evening, everyone. Um, hope everyone had a good evening so far. It sounds like you do. And so uh, today I will be showing you some insight and outcome on our eye ready fall baseline reading and math um, diagnostic. So um, here. So um, first we start with the reading performance. Just a quick refresh on um, how our data was last year throughout um, the three testing windows, uh, fall, winter and spring. So you know, um, the red represent the percent of student who'd be low grade level, and then the green represent percent of students on above grade level. Um, so uh, you can see that we have uh, some consistency in bringing our students out from the below grade level to the on above level throughout each of the diagnostics, uh, each of the assessment. So you can see from the fall to the winter, we um, increased our percent of student above level six point four percent. From winter to spring, we increased another six point two percent. So that where we were last year. And so for the fall um, baseline that the test of the student just took this year, um, you can see that we kind of like where we were a little bit better. Um, it's like, it's, it's the same thing where we were um, when we started the fall last year. So um, hopefully uh, we will be able to move at least six percent or more um, of our student to the above grade level after each of the assessment this year. Here's the uh, placement broken down by grade level. Overall, you can see that almost uh, sixty percent of our student at all grade level are below grade level. So if you look at all the orange shade or red shade, um, these are the student below grade level. For the upper grade, especially six through eight grade, close to fifty percent of our student are two or more grade level below. Very high on the um, six through eight grade levels. Um, here is the performance broken down by ethnicity. In the bottom, you will see um, the number of uh, students for each um, ethnicity group. Most of the student falls up in our district are um, all under the Hispanic Latino or white um, designation. So um, that's, that's why you can see um, a lot of our students uh, Hispanic Latino um, are below grade level. Here is the reading performance um, for English learners, especially looking at newcomers versus non newcomers. So um, uh, newcomers is uh, defined as the English learner who has been in the country for less than two years. Non newcomers, English learners are students who have been in the country for um, more than two years. So you can see overall, both group of students, uh, most of them are below grade level. So ninety-seven percent of our student in both groups are below grade level. However, you can see the newcomers, there are more percentage of the student who are newcomers for three grade bu- grade or three grade level below, right here. Um, another way we can look at the, how the English learner is doing in their reading is also looking at the long-term English learner versus not long-term. So long-term English learner is um, defined as student who are uh, an English learner for five or more years. And then the non-long-term English learners are the ones who've been English learner for less than five years. So you could see there's a big uh, discrepancy between these two groups and how they're doing in their reading diagnostic. Eighty-six percent of our long-term English learner are three grade level behind on their reading level, on their reading uh, for us. Um, this will I show you the um, performance in reading for student with disability. And this is also broken down by student who are in F E C program versus um, student with disability, but in other non-F E C program, like resource and beach and stuff like that. So you can see that most of our F E C student, seventy-eight percent of them fall three grade level below versus uh, the non-F E C student, only forty-five percent. And here is um, just a snapshot of how our student would, who are economically disadvantaged are doing. So economically disadvantaged are students who are, whose family um, would qualify for free reading meal or um, student who are in the homeless um, status. Okay, and you can see at the bottom that um, about half of our students have this status this year. Okay, that is um, the uh, the data for the reading. Here is the math performance data. You can also see that um, it is how we did last year throughout the three diagnostics. You can notice that we are um, doing better in reading than math in general. However, throughout the three assessment um, last year, the percentage kit that we were able to move from below grade level to upper, uh, on a book grade level, actually higher. We were able to move than point nine percent from fall one to, or to winter. And then we moved another seven point seven percent of students um, to uh, on a both level from winter to spring. Um, and then uh, here is where we are right now with our fall diagnostic. We have twenty-three percent of our students on a both level, and then the rest are below grade level from that. Here is our student performance look like across all the grade level. So um, we can see that there's a trend here that um, as the grade level goes up, the higher is the percent of student falling um, uh, into the lower uh, grade performance level. So you know, lower grade, they have like maybe only one uh, grade two or grade three. They have more kids in one grade below level, but as you go to grade six, seven, But as you go to grade six, seven, there's more kid falling under three grade belows level. Here's our student doing in math, broken down by ethnicity group. It's the similar trend that we found in reading, but in general, our students did worse in math compared to their reading. Here is an interesting slide that is how our English learners are doing in math. And we can see by students who are identified as newcomers and non newcomers, there is no difference of how, how long the student English learner has been in the country. It doesn't really make a difference on how well they do in the task format. Next one is how our English learner is doing in math, looking at long term M E L and non long term M E L. And again, you see most of our long term M E L for three grade level below and then not skilled compared to the non long term M E L. Here is how our student with disability doing comparing between SEC students and non SEC students. And here is our student doing for the student who are identified economically disadvantaged. Very similar pattern to reading assessment. Okay, and I think that is the end of my slide. If anybody have any question?
We have someone raising their hand. I don't have a speaker's card, but.
Who is it?
Cynthia Suninga.
We could take him.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm actually not right now, sweetie. I'm on a call. I'll be right, I'll be right down. Sorry, I'm in the middle of parenting. I was just curious what the literacy program is being used in the district?
I will be going over that in the next section as well.
Oh, okay.
And just so I just that, we were just going over the I Ready, but we're going to address some of the issues that we're seeing and what we're doing this next, this year.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
So Jenny, can you stop sharing so that I can go into that other section?
I have a real quick question. I'm sorry Jenny, you may have already said this. For the I Ready math portion, are they, the students allowed to take it in Spanish? They are. Okay, so when we were looking at the English learners versus, no, the newcomers, yeah.
They're allowed to take it in Spanish.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
And so I think you'll just have to scroll up onto the my section.
Yeah, I wanted just to say thank you Jenny very much for all the data. As you know, we had a chance to meet with you ahead of time as well, both you and Anna. Thank you. And as you know, I think all of us, it's sobering, obviously. We know we have a lot of work to do. So I think most of my kind of comments and questions are more about, well, now that we, you know, here's our baseline data. We know we have a lot of work to do, particularly for our E Ls and socio-economically disadvantaged and our special ed students. Those are certainly our focus groups, right? So I do think that the next part will be important, but I did want to just acknowledge Jenny, thank you so much. We are so grateful that you work for us in Redwood City. And you can, you know, you just have a way with data and you make it easy, easy to digest. So, so thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
So we do have some new initiatives, quite a number of them this year. So I want to go over those. So that everyone understands what the teachers are doing. So we have a lot in order to address all of these needs that have been going on for a number of years. Now, this is not new data for us. That there are definitely needs that we need to address. So we have many new initiatives that our teachers are being trained in. For math specifically, we just switched over to illustrative math. And that is quite a change. It's problem based. Learning, sorry, my voice speaks right enough. So in this math, new math program, the teachers, we are training on it.
Sorry. There we go. Sorry. So with our new math, illustrative math, we have ongoing PD happening with our teachers. Again, we have many new initiatives as you see on the slide. Math is one that we know needed to be addressed, but it is going to take us all year to understand the new math program. It is, it is problem based learning. So it's very different from the curriculum we had in the past. We've also for literacy, our benchmark is actually our adopted curriculum. But we've also now had our, our staff and yesterday we finished our first module with making sure all, everyone had gone through the C R L P training. And so C R L P provides us with small group instruction. So it allows us to have an assessment that we can use to make sure we're grouping students. We also have purchased Hagerty foundational skills, which is a systematic phonics skill based program that is currently used for K two. And we, at K two and in bilingual classrooms, we're actually using them in third grade as well. We also have U Fly versus our foundational and decodable books that are also now being used in that small group instruction for reading. And for our bilingual programs, we have Spanish, we have aprendo a ley y escribir, which is also a new curriculum that's phonics based. So for special education, we're also having lots of many opportunities for SIPS. And so SIPS is also being used. It's again, it's a phonics based curriculum for our special education teachers. And then they're also in middle school addressing it with Read One Eighty. So a new initiatives in middle school as well. Our currently English language development, which is also again embedded in benchmark, but we had to supplement, we are supplementing with language power. Right now, currently, our middle school has been trained and is implementing language power. We will be training our teachers in November on Language R for K five. So again, a lot of training ongoing to address the needs of our students. We also have purchased for our reading specialists, some U Fly foundational kits so that they can use in intervention as well. So a lot to address in our reading initiatives and math. Am I going up? There we go. So because of all of this, we also have some new assessments. So Fast Bridge comes to us from the Big Lift. So we, this is again, is an early reading screener. We just took our first assessment. We will have another one coming up in November. And then we'll be able to show that data to see, we don't, to see a comparison from the start. This is, this read, this screener is only done in kindergarten first. And for our multilingual programs, we do it only at the beginning and at the end because they're hard teaching in Spanish. This is only an English, only a screener. We also have our B P S T assessments, which our teachers, all K five have been trained on to use. So this assessment comes from C R L P. And so this is a diagnostic assessment that used to inform their instruction in small groups. So what they do is they take B P S T, they group the students according to what foundational skills are missing. They use Hagerty as the platform to continue to help support that platform. There's also oral reading fluency, which also another great baseline. Oops. It's okay. So oral reading fluency, which is just another component for that helps us see how they're reading in terms of reading, because we don't, we're no longer doing F M P. This is a one minute test where it allows us to see how fast a reading with accuracy. As you know, we do our I Ready three times a year, which is the information you just saw. So part of our consultation and staff has been ongoing. We started gathering information. We know that we have to address these issues with our staff and our students to make sure that we're allowing our students to grow in their academics. Most, we have been doing surveys since last year. I know with Liz that we're doing surveys and we continue this year to try to gather what are the needs of our teachers in terms of professional development in terms. So we had listening lunches where we went to listen in at all the schools, the K five schools. And we met with teachers and teachers were very honest about what was happening and what area focused. So really, one of the things that they've gathered is they want more math PD, which we need to provide. It's been something that's very different and there's many shifts in the math, this math curriculum than there is in the past. So we have to provide that. So we've been really looking at how can we provide that PD on these minimum days as well. Another thing we've been doing is making sure our coaches are actually supporting our unemployed people at the, the four target schools where we see the most struggle. So they are there planning with teachers, coaching teachers, and they were actually initially helping doing assessments. So they are been a great team. Everybody on the staff development has really been really hands on working with everything that we've been doing on these new initiatives. Lots of moving parts. As you can see, I wanted to create a timeline for you. There is an ongoing amount of training that we will continue to do all year long. You can see when we're doing math training, when we're doing literacy training. And there's just a lot of assessments, moving parts constantly. We finish one PD and then we're planning for the next PD. So our next PD is going to be math focused and we have our math trainers from illustrative math coming to do that PD with our teachers. Along with that, our administrators are also going through training with our, the trainers of illustrative math. So we, as administrators, understand the new math program as well. And we're also working with the, with our Kim Bambaugh from the county, who's also helping support us in this math initiative. And partners up, letting us know what other districts in the, in the Bay Area are actually using illustrative math do. And where are they in this, in our trajectory and how can they help us? So we've been really trying to partner up and understanding how to best use illustrative and figure out these things. So as our teachers really want to understand and move forward with the math, it's just very different. So, but you can see this is ongoing. And not only is our TK, TK five doing professional development, but so is our middle school. So our middle school team is really focusing on universal design of learning. And so most of the PDs are on that. How do we do that in the middle school? So our staff development has been providing, using Katie Novak, universal design of learning units to really work with our staff in the middle school to design what's the learning like? And how, how does that look like in a middle school versus an elementary classroom? So they too are going through lots of training. And then hopefully later on, as our teachers get under the bandwidth, a little bit more knowledge of our own curriculum, we too will begin universal design of learning in the K five. But we want them to be able to know the curriculum first so that we can move forward with that. And alongside of that, we continue to work on our M T S S, moving that forward, because that will be part of the universal design of learning. So lots of PD this year. Any questions?
Thank you again, Anna. And I'll go ahead and open it up to you guys. Do you guys have any questions?
Just one question. I mean, I have comments. I'll wait a minute, but one question. When, when you surveyed the teachers and they requested math professional development, I'm curious what they feel. I mean, we're giving them a lot around reading right now, but was there anything else that came up that they talked about supports they need to help get their kids reading and comprehending?
You know, I think, and I was having this conversation with someone yesterday. I think our teachers, we have done so much professional development in reading over the years that they have a lot under their belt in terms of small group instruction. I think now that they have the assessment, right, that guides the instruction and the phonics and the materials, it's probably a little bit easier for them to implement and wrap their head, their brain around, how do I do this? They know that we haven't done that in math. So I think the math is a very, it's problem based. So it is about getting children to not just memorize facts, but to understand number sense. How do I deepen my knowledge and how I solve problems? And so I think that's a different shift because people are used to, they need to learn their multiplications. Well, the standard says multiplication is at the end of third grade, not at the beginning. But we start with kids very early on, right? So they're used to that rote memorization, which is a shift in the net and the standards. They still need to have it, but it's not what is going to move them forward in math. It's that critical thinking part, which we do very well in literature, but we don't do well in math. So I think it goes hand in hand with STEAM. Honestly, it's that design thinking. And we're doing it in STEAM. We need to add that component to math because it is a different way of thinking about math. And I think that's a big shift for many of our teachers. Because homework is going to be different too, right? It's no longer, you know, all these problems. It could be one problem or two problems of critical thinking, of walking through a problem and thinking about how did I get there? And so it is very different than, than what teachers have been used to in the past. I think that's why that shift and the need for the PD is important. And so we continue to survey at our, every, we just had our PD in math the other day. And so we took that comments and we're like, okay, they need to learn, many of them wanted centers. So we're looking at how do we get centers in the next couple of next PD in December to really focus on some of those things. Because we're looking at what their needs are. And some teachers are trying it and some, you know, we're, we're not going to be at full implementation right now because there is a systematic way. They have to do one hour a day, which is a shift for some people. Even kindergarten is one hour. And then they have to add on thirty minutes for centers. So someday, two days a week, it could be an hour, ninety minute block of math, which again, K for fourth and fifth grade, that usually used, used to be their block. But Kinder is very different in first grade. It used to be only an hour. Right? So we're going from forty five minutes, thirty minutes to an hour. That's a big shift. And what works, asking them to do, and we're asking them to do more exploration and build that thinking. So that also is a different shift. That's a great question.
And can you just describe a little bit more about how different the literacy instruction is with Hagerty, with U Fly, with the stuff we're getting from C R L P versus last year, particularly for the young grades?
I think for the young grades, I think it's because we haven't really had a strong phonics base assessment. So the assessment really allows the teachers to see where their gaps are, which we didn't do in the past. So I think with Hagerty, Hagerty is, it'll take, you know, you, you look at the lesson and it's a full, so Hagerty is whole class. It's like a thirty minute whole class. And then they have to do the small group instruction very, using the B P S T. So looking at his skills and looking at decodable books and working on those skills with the kids. So not all the kids are getting the same thing because the assessment tells us what they need, right? So this student may need the, you know, this ending inflection, this one may need suffixes. So the, they're very different in cater, and then they have decodables that address those needs in the class. So the Hagerty has decodable books that come along with it, as well as some schools have purchased U Fly and we have U Fly for our reading. So we have more decodable books that our students can actually read using the strategies that we're learning in the class with the phonics, with the systematic phonics. And we haven't had a systematic phonics in a while. I would say a number of years.
I didn't have any questions, but now I do. And I'm just curious to know if, when we look at the percentages and the students with disabilities, like for example, S D C. Are those strictly S D C students? They're not. Are there any English learners in that group of S D C? Are there any English learners in that group of SDC?
Yes.
Yes, it could be in all three.
Okay. Yes. And that SDC and art, so I think what she disagreed was RSP students, which are students and Gen Ed with resource support. And then you have the specialized learning classes, which are students in all day classrooms. So I think those are the two differences she showed how many kids we have using in special education. Okay. And so when you look at those kids that are RSP, those are Gen Ed kids that are getting support, pullout support or push in support for reading, for math. Where the other kids are more, they come in and they may integrate into specific days or times into the Gen Ed class, but their, most of their time is spent in a specialized learning center.
Okay. And then not to put you on the spot and you can get back to me later, but I'm wondering what are we doing? Obviously we're, we're, we're doing, using new curriculum, but I'm wondering what are we doing to push? Obviously we're doing PD for the teachers, but what are we doing for our parents to actually help their students at home? Especially for those parents that were used to using a certain method and now it's different. I mean, it's been a long time for me to, you know, that my kids were little, but I'm just wondering how we thought of that, what we're doing for the parents?
So in terms of reading, we haven't really discussed that as a team. We have just been moving forward training. In terms of math, it's one of the things that we've been trying to work with Kim Bambao because math is a different focus, right? We're reading, there, there's a lot of things that we can still do or teachers can still do to act, to teach what they're doing in class. But for math, we have, I have asked Kim Bambao to help us. What are some of the things that we can do with our parents? Because it's a different shift when homework doesn't come home with 10, 15 problems, it's two problems, right? That shift is very difficult for some parents because they want more. They think more is better and not necessarily depending on the program we have. So those are some of the things I've been asking Kim if in our resources, do we have anything that we can provide our families? Illustrated math also has a parent component that teachers can send out with parents snippets about what's happening and the units are doing. So it's another component that teachers can use. There's a lot in the, in the actual online platform. So one of the things that we did the other day was having teachers learn a little bit more about the online platform. Honestly, I'd never been on it and I was on it and I was lost. But because I'm like, I'm a novice. I was watching teachers. I'm like, where am I clicking? I was, you know, along with them in the PD, trying to understand what they had to do because I haven't gone on that website. And so there's a lot on the website for teachers, but you know, you have to take it step by step. And so as we do the PDs, we also look at the online platforms, what can be, they be using so that they can also use to plan. So there are some adaptations that they have that there, we haven't shared with yet. Some teachers have discovered them. But there's just too much at one time. And so we're taking it in bits and pieces as to, as we look at the surveys that we do in the PDs for math. But yes, I think we have some parent components to do that we haven't got there yet because we've been so focused on the teachers.
And then we do have a speaker since, yeah, Cynthia.
Yeah, go ahead, Cynthia.
Hi again. Thank you for. Anyway, I'm really happy to hear that you guys are using Hegarty. I think it's a fabulous program. I'm just curious as to what the literacy program is just in general. Is it balanced literacy? Like what is the overall kind of curriculum at the, at the district?
So our curriculum, our main curriculum is Benchmark. And so that is our curriculum that we use for reading. So there are different components in reading for the balanced part of it. So we've all, we've been using Benchmark for a number of years now that have different components. And so Benchmark has been around and it has small reading group, it has trade books that are based on themes that are aligned with our integrated units. So with, that align with social studies and science themes. So for that program, it, they, we have been using it for many years now. Teachers know how to use Benchmark. We, what we didn't have in it was that systematic phonics part that was missing. And so that's what we've added with the Hegarty and the BPST.
Oh, I see. That's fabulous. So when was that added? The Hegarty? Was that just this year?
Yeah, we just, we, teachers just got trained in September. Yeah. So it's going to take a while to, to, there's a lot of materials. The teachers have been given lots of materials and learning to unpack it all. So yes, it's, it's ongoing training on all of these new, new initiatives.
Well, I've used Hegarty, Hegarty myself with my kids and it's very helpful, especially for the kids in special education.
Oh, good. And thank you.
Yeah, you know, I did want to just say thank you very much for your leadership and all that you're doing. And I know you have the support of Liz. But thank, thank you for, for all of that. And then I did want to just give a shout out to all the teachers and the coaches and just everybody who's supporting this. I know we're asking a lot of our teachers this year. I mean, we've been asking a lot of our teachers and our educators and, and those who support our teachers, our peer educators and everybody else. I mean, you know, I'm reflecting on the data somewhat, and I think we just need to acknowledge that we're still seeing the results of COVID. I mean, it was two and a half. You could even say going into three years of some, you know, really difficult times and you can see that just in, in, in the data. And so you know, I'm hopeful that I think with our new initiatives, with everybody back in school last year, full time, this year, full time, all of our counselors that we just talked about in, just for our audience and some other board meetings, we've heard reports both at the school level, but also other things that we're doing. There's a lot of other support systems after school programming and tutoring and all sorts of stuff going on. So we, you know, we didn't really talk about that tonight, but I think that's important to acknowledge. But I do just want to say thank you so much to our, our teachers and our administrators and everybody who's going through this training. It's going to work for the students. I just know, you know, we just have to take a deep breath and do the best we can and, and, and thank you.
Yeah, I agree. There's a, there's a lot going on and I know this is year one implementation. And so it'll take some time to sort of work through the kinks and be able to see what the results are, but but you know, I think literacy, driving our, our, the ability of the students to be able to read. I think that, you know, it really does take kind of an all in strategy to be able to get there. And if we were going to pick one, I think that that would be a good one for us to have as sort of like our, our all in strategy and to really kind of really break the trend of being able to say, we can predict outcomes because of demographics. That, that's just going to take an all in strategy. And I think that, you know, as we're looking at the literacy, it's, it's a lot. And so I appreciate the work that everyone's doing, but I'm expect that it will, over the next several years, start to really lead towards different outcomes. And I know that we have a data team in place that's been put in place over the last couple of years that if it's not giving the outcomes that we're looking for, we'll be able to see it in the data and be able to course correct or add or make changes as it goes in. And I think that that feedback loop and that willingness to change and sort of go all in, I think is going to really be the thing that'll yield the results over the next several years. So thanks a lot.
Thank you, Anna and Jenny for your presentation tonight. I don't have a whole lot more to add. I, you know, I think we were on a really good trajectory before COVID. We were doing really well and, and we had a huge setback, just like everyone in the country did. So, you know, I'm looking forward to seeing us get back up to how we were doing. You know, I'm concerned about the English language learners and the, the long-term English learners. I'm concerned about the difference in the scores between white and Hispanic and black students. We shouldn't have those discrepancies between the different groups. So we need to figure out how we can serve all students better. But I'm excited about where we're headed. I'm excited about the new curriculum and I know our teachers are working even harder than they already do, which is kind of impossible to me to think of. So just thank you for all the professional development too. I think that's so important for them. And yeah, looking forward to seeing those scores go up.
And I don't have any other questions. I mean, obviously other than the long-term piece, does you know, make me feel a little like what is going on with those kids, especially when we have some newcomers that within a year reclassified and then, you know, we have those long-term English learners that are not doing well and the percentage, which obvious, it's obviously high. So you know, I'm, I'm sure that we are doing something, but are we doing, can we do more to, you know, make them grow? Help them grow.
Well, thank you. I also want to thank our staff development team because it really takes a lot to plan all of this. And like I said, we finished one and we're planning for the next. And we're, now we're planning for the next two as I'm looking forward. But it is, it is taking a lot of manpower to do this PD. So our staff development team really has taken on the lead on all of this. So I really want to acknowledge their work because it is their work that they have been doing last year and they continue to do this year to really be, not only are they in school, in the classrooms every day, working with teachers and observing and supporting. They are also creating the PDs for the staff. So they too are doing a lot of work. So I want to acknowledge them. Thank you.
You know, just real quick, I'm, I'm glad that you did acknowledge them. And I think, you know, we've talked about that in other meetings, but we didn't specifically say it tonight. So it's really important. I do see some of them online. So thank you to our professional development team and our staff development team. They are amazing. I mean, they work so hard 24/7 to provide the services to the school sites and the teachers. So thank you for acknowledging them.
Yeah, it is a big lift. It is a big lift. And you know, the, what the teachers have been able to move in the direction of what we're asking them to do is, is also something that is, is, it's not easy. It's, it's not easy. And I see, you know, we have a few teachers on here tonight. And, you know, they come to the PDs, they go back into the classroom, start preparing, work with staff development, call if they still need some other assistance. Plus the administrators are also going through the PD also as Anna stated to make sure that they understand what should be happening. And it's a lot of hard work and you know, kudos to all the teachers, staff, our staff development team, our administrators that are out at the school sites because the school sites is where it's happening. And I'm glad to hear that, you know, we all are concerned about the long-term English learners. They are our alts. And definitely that discrepancy between our Hispanics, our black students and our white students. There's something that we, you know, we're, we're moving forward with these new initiatives, but I think there's something that we need to really look at it at those school sites, we have that, those populations and what more? Or what can we do differently or examine it a bit more out of the, thinking outside of the box and what is happening. Big pieces, the parent engagement and how we can get that back into place. To understand that, you know, you just, you know, how we, how we've spoken in the past, where many parents and I'm not going to generalize, but Latinos and, and my grandmother being one where she thought, okay, just send the kids to school. I don't have to worry about, no, that's not how it works. And as my mother learned, no, I don't, I won't do that. And we, we have to explain that to our families that we need your assistance. We need to be at school every day. There, and just look at it. We talk about it a lot at Stanford and I know Amy's off the line right now and we have the researchers working with us. One thing was to definitely get the EL program. We've got that. Okay. We didn't have one. So that, that's one piece of support. But the next piece of support is what for those students who and, and I'm talking to those students that are with us right now at TK. And by the time they're done with third grade, you know, when we have our, when we get on that trajectory of looking, doing our strategic plan and it's third grade, you know, at the end of third grade, you should be reading at third grade. Okay. What happened? And that's where we're really looking at two right now. But our students who are beyond that and are still a few years behind grade level. What do we do? You know, there is a success of that tutoring program. I would like to talk to them and Anna have us talk, what are they doing differently with those tutoring, those students to get that growth that you saw at Garfield? You know, with those kids that they worked with, you know? So there's work to do. And I know some of our students are doing really well. If you look at some of the, some of the demographic data that we just saw, but for our students of color, there is something that we need to do more and that's something we're going to have to look at. I know we've got our priority sites, but we still need to look at those prior, when we're at those sites, what is it that we? What is it that we're missing? What is it that we're missing?
Well, and then if I could also comment, when we look at the data, of course, too, we see the sixth, seventh and eighth grade percentages are, you know, have really grown in comparison to the lower grades. And again, we do want to focus on all kids and yes, we want to do TK to third, but we also want to again, find out what is happening to those kids and how can we help them? Because again, if we think about it, they're getting ready to go to high school. That is just going to get harder and harder for them, especially you know, when you are an English learner and you continue to be an English learner, that's just going to keep you, you know, or holding you back, you know, even more. So.
But thank you. Good job.
Okay. So moving on to. Okay, let's go ahead and take a five minute break then. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for waiting for us five minutes. And moving on to discussion items, 12.1 is recommendation to convene board study session to update the board of trustees on potential workforce housing.
Okay. So you received a memo in regard to a study session and I think, I believe I'm, you all got the date. The date is November 2nd. And what this study session is for is to us to let not only our staff members, our teachers, our community members be aware that, you know, the type of work we have been doing for the last four years now, since we started, I believe July, it's, no, it's June 26, 2019. And where we are. So this is a discussion to entertain the possibility of moving forward with this. The gym is available at Hoover School that night on second and we'll provide some light snacks and things like that for people that come. And then just have a discussion and at the, at this study session, Peter will be there, Peter Ingram, our consultant, our attorney Clarissa will be there. And just give an overview of how this started beginning on June 26th of 2019 to where we are now and to entertain questions from the community. So your thoughts to move forward with this?
Sounds like a good idea to me. I love the location of using Hoover Gym and I think that yeah, I think it sounds like a good plan.
Yeah, Peter and I were there a couple of weeks ago. He wanted to see the gym and to see if it would, you know, meet the need. And he said, my gosh, I never, I didn't, I've never seen this gym before. And I go, well, you wouldn't have, it's brand new. It's a year old. He goes, no, this will be great. Let's use this. Let's use gym.
And then I forget, how many people actually fit in the gym?
It's a good question. I know it's. Martin's out. Is Martin out there? Was he still out there? He's on the line.
I'm just curious if this is going to be, okay, if you want, go ahead, Martin.
Martin, go ahead. You want to unmute yourself? Martin, it's how many people fit in the Hoover Gym? He's still muted. Ah, let's see. Can I unmute him? No, I can't. Can you unmute him?
I can ask to unmute, but.
I have a feeling for this. I, I don't think we're going to meet capacity.
No, it's a couple hundred.
I would think at least a couple hundred. I mean, I, you know, I'm thinking, first of all, I think it's a great idea and I think it's, you know, we've had some conversations over the years, just sort of very brief reports, right? In public sessions of the board meetings, a lot of it has been in closed session because we're negotiating on property. So but it's, it's, you know, I think we're at a point where I, I'm excited for us to share with the community kind of where we're at. Basically be able to answer questions, that sort of thing. So in thinking about it. So in thinking about it, I mean, if we have forty or fifty people there, I would be thrilled, right? Because I I think we're also going to offer it on Zoom. Are we just going to record it? That that might be hard to do, right? Okay, so I know we're going to have a frequently asked questions that will be available. So there'll be some things available for people if they cannot make it. But I do think we'll have to advertise it, Cecilia, and try to get the word out and get people there. I guess we'll see, you know, it's always a lot to ask people to come come out at night.
It would be a study session, but I'm wondering. When it comes down to public comment, are we going to continue to keep if there's more than like twenty people, then they?
We have board policy. We do have board policy on that when it's X amount. And then it goes to a certain amount of minutes. It even goes down to one minute, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, because I'm just wondering too, if we want to, as part of maybe the advertisement to actually say you may get a minute, two or three, just so that they can plan accordingly.
Well, I think, I mean, one thing that we've been talking about with the Workforce Housing Committee is since it's a it's a it's a steady session. And you know, with the study session, it can be less formal and it doesn't have, I mean, we do need to have the opportunity for the public to comment. We need to and, you know, announce the meeting because we'll all be there. So we want to make sure that it meets the Brown Act requirements. But we were thinking of actually having Raphael, who we heard from tonight, facilitate the meeting. And we actually have presentations. And then there'll be an opportunity to comment. And what we had talked about is maybe like Plan A, if it's twenty people, then it's a conversation, right? Plan B would be if there's two hundred people, then it would be a different way that you'd be getting input. And so I think Raphael and and Dr. Baker and Peter are still talking about. It could be comment cards. It could be yellow stickies. It could be coming up to a microphone. I think some of it might depend on how many people are there. So I think it's going to be a little different. Everybody will have an opportunity to participate. But it won't be as, because we're not taking action. It won't be as formal, like you get three minutes to speak or one minute. But again, this is up to us how we want to do it. This was our suggestion to have a more informal kind of info sharing night.
So there'll be a presentation to be started with a slide deck. And then after that, it, from what Peter has suggested was to was to ask some questions among us, ask us questions. And those questions may lead to other questions that the audience may have. And maybe they can write them on cards. And as they write them on cards, send them, you know, to Evelyn. And then we read the question, we answer it the best way we can. And maybe if we can't, we'll have to get back to them. That was one of Peter's suggestions of how to move forward.
But Cecilia, that's a good point. As board president, you need to understand what your role is in terms of comments and stuff like that. So I guess, you know, you guys could talk about
Definitely.
How to do that. But yeah, that's a good point. But but I think our I think I think our thinking was it would be more of an informal opportunity to share with the community to get any questions they have, try to answer them, which we don't really do in a regular board meeting, right? Because we're not going to start facilitating question and answer with the public. Anyway, that was our idea. So it's a little less of a, you know, like a formal board meeting presentation. And and actually, I don't think, so you know, we did a lot of this and we were doing the facility master plan. We had these study sessions that were forgetting the term, like, what is it called when we announce a public meeting, like our board?
A workshop?
Well, so we we announced it, but but it's just a less, you know, formal sort of thing.
It was less formal. And then then that led on to, you know, subgroups and all that.
People can even go to tables and table talks or whatever.
As we moved along, you know, to other sessions.
Sounds good. I just wanted to understand because again.
Yeah, no, it's a good point. You're the board president. So so I think the thinking was to have an outside facilitator. So then we can sort of participate and have a conversation, but.
Oh, Martin.
Oh, Martin.
Hello.
Yes.
Hi, can you hear me? I'm sorry. I missed I missed the question. I was away from my phone.
The capacity of Hoover, the gym.
The new gym?
Yes.
Okay, depends on the seating that you would like. I mean, we could do teacher seating up to one hundred thirty two with the square tables, or we could do banquet style three hundred and ninety seats.
We're not going to have three ninety. I don't think so.
Yeah. And even more so if we don't, if we just do chairs.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you, Martin.
Sure.
I mean, what do you guys think? Yeah, I think I think, I mean, I would, I mean, I'd feel good if we have twenty five people there. We have forty. I'd be like, wow.
Well, because I'm wondering too, and and tell me if, again, this is my first kind of rodeo doing or thinking about this, but again, parent engagement, I know that we have some of the parents, like, what are we doing as far as outreach to?
So we haven't decided that yet. So that's Jorge's on vacation this week. So when he comes back, we'll start meeting with with Peter on Monday.
Yeah. So one thing I was thinking is it would be nice, I think, for this particular one. Since it is a little bit different than a regular board meeting is, you know, could we get it in the superintendent's newsletter, the principal's newsletters? You know, I definitely want the staff to know about it. I I did have an opportunity to go to the RCTA monthly meeting. And so I was able to talk to our teacher union leadership. But we definitely need to reach out to our classifieds. So they they know, and you know, maybe between Wendy and Anna and, you know.
Well, Jorge can put something up.
Yeah, like a little flyer, like, we hope you can come. And I know when I talked to the teachers, some of them were interested in coming. We're trying to make it six to eight, so it's not too long. Yeah. But you're right, we need to advertise it because if you know, if it's just another board meeting, a lot of people would, you know, rather do something else.
So obviously, it's a recommendation. So do we all agree to go ahead and move forward with the November second? I mean, is that? I mean, is that how we're doing? I mean, I'm sorry. I apologize. But yeah, right. It's just.
I think so. I think that's what it was.
I think it's, I think it's a great idea. I think we should. And I'm sure that Dr. Baker will work with you to make sure that we know how the meeting's running and put that stuff together. I think it's great.
Okay, great.
Right. So now I would, so it's November second, six to eight Hoover Gym. Perfect. I'll start working on that with Peter and Jorge, Jorge, when he comes back, for sure.
So moving on to item twelve point two is first reading and discussion of board policy fifty one forty one point six, School Health Services.
Thank you. So I wish this board policy came to us last time when Patrina Redd, our Director of Health and Wellness, presented, would have been timely. However, I do think this board policy is is well suited to be presented tonight because it did capture a lot of the items and examples that she recommended or is already implementing, plus the upcoming well being center and its opening and the possibility of branching out to partners for additional health supports for students. So this board policy really captures that information. It is new to our district. So I just wanted to point that out. Thank you to the Board Policy Committee for meeting. Thank you to all the directors that contributed their thoughts to all board policies for tonight as well. We did have a recommendation from Trustee Wells that we consider. It's actually a very good point, though, and I reflected on it further this afternoon. He suggested that on page one, in the fourth paragraph, it states, "The board may prioritize school health services to schools serving students with the greatest need, including schools with medically underserved populations and a high percentage of low income and uninsured children and youth." And the recommendation was to switch it from the board may prioritize to the board must prioritize. And my response was, "May allows for some latitude in times when we may need latitude, but certainly our equity goals support this particular change." So this is a discussion item tonight. This, along with any other questions or comments you may have.
You said page one, where I'm just trying.
Page one, fourth paragraph, "The board may prioritize school health services."
And so my intent behind it was that in providing the services, if the district is able to offer them at all, it must be done in a prioritized way, as opposed to saying, hey, let's offer some health services and, you know, we can just do it equal across all the sites without any prioritization. I didn't intend to mean that it must provide health services all the time, if for some reason, although I think it should. If for some reason it was unable to fund it, that was kind of kind of the intent. And so I had just pondered it and shared it with Wendy. I wasn't even positive if I were recommending it. But I think that prioritization is important. And so I wanted to make sure that, see if we, if elevating it would actually be too much of a bind.
Yeah. And I do think we have past practice of doing as such, which is good. But this would be putting it in board policy clearly. So.
I don't disagree that prioritizing is important, but I'm always really hesitant to change a may to something more imperative. It kind of ties the district's hands a little bit more than I am comfortable with for the flexibility to offer. And I know that, you know, we have our equity focus. I I know that our district will prioritize as needed. I would prefer leaving it as May. I don't know. Do you, if you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, I would prefer leaving it as May, but I'm certainly open to thinking of a must. I mean, must is sort of like shall. So so oftentimes in the board policies, you'll see a may or a shall, right? So I think we should just think of it as shall. So I just think it constrains us where there, I'm just trying to think of an example that would be a good example as to, because I agree. I mean, I think for the most part, we do prioritize exactly this way. But I'm just thinking, would there be an example where it might tie us unnecessarily? So and I feel like we have a lot, a lot of other safety nets and equity statement. And, you know, we're doing a lot of other things. So I'm not worried about us not doing the right thing in this regard. So but I appreciate you bringing it up. So I don't know. But I'm open to it if we want to say shall or must, but but I think I'd rather leave it May, but.
Yeah, and I'm okay with it saying it's May. I just wanted to call out that, you know, the prioritization is really important, particularly as you know, I mean, schools are always underfunded. And so we have to prioritize and make sure that we're you you know, we just went through, like, talking about being all in on making sure that our students are able to be literate. This is part of it, right? Like achieving literacy. By the way, I love this policy. First of all, I just want to step back for a second and thank you as the subcommittee, the policy subcommittee for bringing this one here. I just, I couldn't believe that we don't have it. It's the first time. I mean, because of course, good physical and mental health is critical to a student's ability to learn. And that, you know, and that schools are actually uniquely positioned to increase health equity. And so and to really help ensure that all students have access to their necessary healthcare services. I think that this is, this is part of the strategy of being able to get everything there. So I I love this policy. Thanks for bringing it to us.
You know, we do prioritize.
I know.
I know. I was just talking to Anna Paola and to Katrina today. And they said, no, we went here. These are the schools we hit first. Said, yeah, those are the ones you should go to.
Yeah, you know, we do. And that's why I felt comfortable asking the question. Because it's like, I know that we're already doing it. And I thought, well, it could reflect exactly what we're doing.
So just one comment, though. Sometimes we have policies that are folded into other policies. So I know we had this conversation at our policy committee meeting. I don't know if this is one of those that there's like another board policy that does mention some of the stuff. And and that's why we haven't had an explicit, I don't remember if this is one of them, but sometimes that happens. I remember years ago, somebody asked me why we didn't have any policies on bullying. Well, we did. It was just folded into like a student discipline or something like that. We do have an explicit bullying policy now, but yeah.
Well, I appreciated the comments and the suggestions. And I think it's great that we bring it together here at this meeting. Because I know that Elisa and Jen and I are just in our one committee, but but the the questions are appreciated. So thank you to that.
So and obviously, I was just looking, obviously, just to look at the meaning and exactly, and it's like, shall is mandatory, where may is optional. So obviously, but if you say may, then you know, I'm using it's optional. Now, the word shall and must just must look or sound more like you have to, although shall is still mandatory. Shall sounds better to me. But again, I know that the updates or the new policies come in based on CSBA language, which we can still change anyway. So that would be the thing, too, is like, if we leave it as may, that's how most people have it.
I mean, I guess, you know, the the interesting thing about that is if you say shall prioritize, it doesn't limit you from off. Here's my concern is that we know that we have students at every school site that need services. Although we have higher populations of them at some school sites, and some of it depends on classrooms and some of its demographics of where people live and neighborhood schools and that sort of thing. So when I think shall, I'm just concerned, will that limit us? But actually, if you're just saying prioritize, you're just prioritizing, right? You're not necessarily limiting yourself. So anyway, I'm kind of going back to, I would actually probably be fine with either, because I think, I don't think it would actually really lock us into not providing services to somebody who needs them. Which which is mostly what I was thinking about is I just wouldn't, I don't, and I was trying to think of an example of why that would be a concern, but anyway, we may have spent more time than.
Yeah, I'm okay with it. I'm okay with it saying may. I just, you know, the prioritization is the part that I think is really important. And as long as we can continue to do that. And actually, I'm glad that we did have this conversation, just to reinforce that prioritization is really important. Yeah.
Now, can we take the word of May out and just leave the board prioritizes school health services? Just another thought as I was reading it again.
Yeah, you just, then it's. That's what we do. That is what we do. We do prioritize. You know, there is a priority.
I would suggest we let the subcommittee take that feedback and decide if they think that may coming out and prioritizes. Does that, is that fair? Is that to push it on you? And then we can just see it in the second reading?
Well, I think it's good. Dr. Baker, do you guys have any thoughts that are just curious from your perspective, since you're kind of leading the programs?
I I would, my thought, because because of the mission, the vision and the values that we have. And this is getting me on to what, you know, what we're sharing, but, you know, we've all been up to. When I'm talking to these consultants for this strategic planning, and we talk about the mission, vision and values, and then we talk about prioritizations. I go, yeah, we prioritize. And this is how we do. And it's like, okay, it says we don't have to worry about that when we get to that section. So I'm kind of thinking I would, myself, I'd leave it as May. That's how I would leave it. It gives you the flexibility. And we prioritize a lot, not necessarily. All the times, there's there's students in some of our other school sites that need the services and they get them. They may not be at our schools that we have that are high priority schools, but they need the services and we make sure they get them. And we're working with several right now. Which we've talked about, and I've talked with Maeve and Katrina. Yeah, that's where they are. That's where they need to get the service.
We can, we'll consult, but yeah.
Thank you. Sounds good. Moving on to twelve point two, first reading and discussion of board policy. Oops, sorry. Twelve point three, first reading and discussion of board policy, eleven thirteen, District and School Websites.
This particular policy is is really an update for to outline more specifics on privacy. So were there any questions on this particular policy? Specifically to our websites and the postings.
Moving on to twelve point four, first reading and discussion of board policy fifty one forty one point five, Mental Health.
Well, once again, perfect timing for tonight. We heard information about that previously. Well, once again, perfect timing for tonight. We heard, uh, information about that previously. And really, this board policy update is really to assist us, I think, with our work and the communication of it, and the types of supports that we're giving. Our students and have been for quite some time. Uh, there was a question regarding mental health posters. And actually, Anna Paola and her team were already in the middle of making them when we reached out to check. And so that has been happening, and then certainly the notifications through staff trainings, and then. Um, student supports and parent notifications at the beginning of the year are still present. So. It was nice in this particular policy to go and say, yes, check, 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 check. We are in good shape. So, any questions regarding this policy?
Thank you. Moving on to twelve point five, first reading and discussion of board policy sixty-one seventy-seven, summer learning.
So, this is also a new policy. However, we have been putting these practices in place. Uh, what was interesting in this policy is it outlined our funding sources and our requirements to provide summer learning opportunities. For students, um, our unduplicated students and students that are at risk, certainly, but also to open the doors for enrichment opportunities. Which I know has been a district focus for many years to provide, uh, both of those throughout the summer. And so are there any particular questions on this policy? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, moving on to consent items. If there are no questions, can I please get a motion to approve?
And make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye, thank you. Um, moving on to, um, item fifteen, board and superintendent's report. Who would like to go first?
I can start, yeah. Um, so we all attended, uh, Experience Dyslexia, uh, at the event at Redwood City Library. Um, you know, thanks to the library for hosting it, and the Hale family for sponsoring it. Um, it was a very immersive and. Um, you know, enlightening experience to go through, so I really appreciated that. Um, I attended the education committee meeting last week. Um, I think I had to drop off, I think this was one that I had to drop off a little bit early, though. And then I went to the speaker series, the Latino Leaders Coalition of the Bay Area's Latino Heritage Month Speaker Series, uh, that was over at Sequoia High School on Friday. This is Dr. Curtis Acosta and former California Assembly Member Jose Medina, and they were talking about their work, um, bringing ethnic studies. Both making it a requirement for high school graduation here in California, and also the, the, um, success and then struggles. Dr. Acosta had in, uh, Tucson, I think, uh, with it, and, and then eventually victory over. Um, when the, you know, the, the government decided ethnic studies shouldn't be taught. Uh, and the fight that they had to be able to do that. Now he does consulting here in, uh, California, um, to help high schools implement their. Mostly high schools. I think they do K through eight, too, but, um, uh, ethnic studies. So, it was, uh, it was interesting. Thanks for being on the committee to help put it together.
So, um, yeah, I, I did want to just say that dyslexia experience was, was so good and, um. Really, uh, powerful, I think, um, for all of us who were there. And actually, uh, Belmont Redwood Shores was also, um, in attendance, the superintendent and a few of their board members, which was nice. And then a lot of parents were there. Um, and then they just had a lot of good resources as well. I know that some of us picked up. So, that was, that was great. So, I, I do want to thank the Hale family and the library as well. Um, I had a CSBA board meeting not, I think, two weekends ago, and, um. There, there was a lot talked about, but one of the things I want to mention is they are, we, we did agree to put together an artificial intelligence task force. And they'll be working the next couple of years, but I'm sure we'll be seeing things more rapidly than that. It's not like they're going to wait to put, do a final report, because this is moving quickly. But I think it'll help inform board policies, um. Policy briefs, uh, they have a whole research group now, um, CSBA does, so I'm sure they'll be doing research around it. But it's, uh, got a third board members on it, and then the other two thirds are superintendents, IT specialists. In school districts, as well as just experts out there. And, um, there was some discussion about how teachers are already using it. To help with classroom instruction, um, which I found really interesting, and I know, I think we're looking at that, but. Um, I think there's going to be a lot of stuff coming out of this, but I, I was encouraged to hear how some of our, uh, you know, teachers are using it across the state. Um, so anyway, but that'll be really interesting, I think. So, we'll pay attention to that. And there is a new ethics training requirement, and CSBA will be offering that. So, all the board members will need to take a two-hour training every couple of years, but it doesn't go into effect for a couple of years. So, you don't have to worry about it right away. Um, let's see if there's anything else. I think there was lots of other stuff, but I, I think that was the things that I wanted to highlight here. And then, of course, annual conferences coming up, which I think many of us are attending. Um, let's see, there is a CSBA roadshow where senior staff will be here, and that's October twenty-third. And I think some of us have already signed up, so I encourage everybody to do that. And that's open to other administrators, too, if you'd like to, to go to that. Um, let's see, already mentioned, RC, oh, RCTA, so, so I did, I did go to, uh. The union membership meeting, and they did have some questions about Measure S. Uh, at that in terms of, you know, how are we, what are the projects? They wanted to put a plug in again for the HVAC and air conditioning, which I did tell them that is on the list of considerations. Absolutely, it's high priority up there. And they also, a few of them encouraged us to go out to some of the older classrooms. That still need a lot of updates. And I reminded them that for Measure T, we only had a third of the money we needed. So, Measure S will help to do a lot more, but they definitely want to be engaged. So, I think when, particularly when we're going around to the school sites, let's make sure that we're engaging the teachers. That, that was a message, and I just wanted to. They asked me to relay that to everybody, so I said I would do that. And then, uh, we had a workforce housing committee and a policy committee meeting. And I think that's it.
All of mine have been covered.
So, the dyslexia, um, I do want to say it was quite a challenging experience, and it was. Something that can just throw you back. And one of the things that I do just want to let you guys know that I made a comment to. We were all there, actually, including David, right? Um, I, I did make a comment. It brought back a little bit of anxiety as an English learner. So, I did say to my circle, um, how the English learners feel this way, right? Where you're listening to English, but you're really not expressing it. And when it comes down to the reading part. You know, I, I was reading something, I was already a sophomore, four years in as an English learner, and everybody started laughing at me. And I was like, I didn't mean it, but, you know, it's just, English is so complicated. So, anyway, I, I thought I'd throw that out there. But it was quite an eye-opener, what the poor kids that have dyslexia feel, right? When they're going through it, especially, again, it could be that they're little and they don't, it doesn't get diagnosed till they're a lot older, and so it's very unfortunate. Um, the other thing that I have is, um, I attended the CLSBA conference, which. Two of the days were canceled, um, unfortunately, because there was a union dispute at the hotel. And so, but we did get two days of networking with the people that were there, and, um, we got to go to the Queen Mary, which was an off-site. Um, event, and Dolores Huerta was there, because she wouldn't cross the picket line, but she went there and she gave a speech. She, she also got a recognition from the CLSBA, uh, members. And one of the things that she said was, she talked a lot about. All, all the efforts that she's been doing, as you guys all know, she's been an activist for over fifty years. Um, with, you know, social justice and the farm workers. And she did say that board members are the gatekeepers of education, and so she just wanted to just obviously push. And of course, as Latinos, there was some, um, Anglo and some Black, um. Superintendents and, um, board members, too. Um, and she's just said, you know, just want to make sure that people know. And to go and, you know, go get a seat at the table so that we could bring out the perspective. So, that was very nice. Um, and I believe that is it. And I do want to let you guys know, this Friday is our last of the series speaker. It will be at the Bayside, um, Academy and the Samatay Union, Samatay Foster City School District. And it, it will be a student panel. We are going to have a student from Sequoia, there's Cabrillo, La Honda Piscadero.
And, and, uh, isn't there one from?
There's.
Jefferson.
There's, yeah, um.
Because the one from South City.
And then there's one from, um, Samatay Union High School District as well. Yeah. Yeah, so you guys are all invited. And that's it for me.
And you were at the meeting last night.
Yeah, we meet every week. Yeah.
Yeah. Cecilia stayed longer than I did. I, I got left after nine. Uh, everything's been mentioned, uh, with the exception of, I had my final two, uh, meetings with consultants. I'm considering for strategic planning. I think I've narrowed it down to one. He will get me the proposal. He worked, um, very closely with the Cabrillo Superintendent. And that's how I got this reference. Uh, he did a great job there in Cabrillo. And, um, I really liked what he had to say. He says, we're way ahead of the game. He goes, you've got your mission, you've got your vision, you've got values. And he says, okay, let's work on what's going to happen now. You've got those. And there's, and now the, the, uh, curriculum piece, the data piece, and where do you want to see your kids go? From in the elementary level, they're going to the high school, what's your expectation for them when they leave you? What do you want them to have? So, um, and then the family engagement piece. I said, we, that's, we are lacking in that. He did a great job with Cabrillo. Um, he'll work backwards. I said, I'd like to have it completed by, you know, come to the board meeting, the last board meeting in June. He says, well, backwards plan then. And, um, he is very, he was a teacher, he was a principal, he worked at the district. District office. Uh, he says, I haven't been a superintendent, but I have superintendents that are working with me. And, um, you know what I've done in Cabrillo. So, I really felt really comfortable with him, and he knows. Um, the work that one needs to do when you're in a, a, a diverse community, like, like ours. And, and when you, when you think of Cabrillo and John and Shawna, like, says this, you know, he has his very, very, you know, wealthy white. And then he has the other with just Latinos. And so, um, he really has. The thought, the knowledge, and the expression of how to bring people together. And with your, looking at everything through that lens that we have been looking at, at equity. To move everyone forward. So, that really impressed me. So, he, um, will get me the proposal. It's not inexpensive, it's more than I thought, but, uh, we do have the money from the Quantograph that I can use. I, I think it'd be worth it, I really do. With the, um, a look at some of our data from our, um. From our own surveys that we sent out with the Panorama Survey, any other surveys that we have done, uh, within the last couple of years. And then they'll also create one for us, for our staff, and for our community, for us all also. So, I think he'll work out well. I'm just waiting for him to get me the proposal. Hopefully, we can, he can put us in the queue. He hasn't, I think he's going to work with a couple of the districts right now. He says, one more would be it. Um, so I said, well, give me the proposal as soon as you can, so I can look at it, show it to Rick, and, you know, get it. To you guys, so you can see it also. So, I think I'm there.
Now, moving on to item sixteen, information, sixteen point one is information on the Samatay County Investment Fund. And are there, were there any questions? No? Okay. Great. So, moving on to correspondence.
So, we got an email from a community member, uh, with questions around the budget. And then I also got a, a phone message from a community member about our committees.
We got an email from a parent regarding the Mandarin immersion program. Uh, it just came in.
Came in last night.
Last night.
But you can follow us?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, and then eighteen point one, possible other business suggested items for future agendas.
November second?
Yep.
Okay, and then moving on to nineteen point one, are there any changes to the board calendar?
No, I'll just be adding the November second one.
Okay, thank you. So, moving on to twenty, it's nine fifty. Who would like to make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.